Welcome all. I would like to call the January 11th meeting of our City Council and the redevelopment order. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? We're in the Boy Scouts.
Okay.
The Boy Scouts, the Boy Scouts.
Are they gonna do?
Okay.
You gotta write it down for us here, Chris. If you don't write it down...
So we have a little event here. Go ahead. We have our Boy Scouts here from St. Carlos. Thank you.
Color guard, please prepare to advance colors. Scout salute. Advance the colors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hold on just one second till we get that phone turned off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening? Okay, barring none. Report from closed session, Attorney, Mr. Rubens?
No reportable action from closed session.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number four on the agenda are council communication and announcements. Councilmember Grocott, starting on that side?
Nothing that important, I would say, but I did have lunch with one of the companies, Fire Station 13. That's a tradition that we have with the fire department, that the board members meet, I think it's once a quarter. And so we had that. I don't know if Mr. Grisilli had lunch or not, but I went to Station 13 and met with the fellows there. That's it.
I also, as Councilmember Grocott indicated, he and I are on the fireboard, and Chief Frye has instituted this in the last couple of years, where once a quarter, we go out to the fire stations. Each, we have four fire stations, and we each quarter meet at a different one, and sit down with the fellows and the ladies, and talk about anything and everything they want to talk about. And it helps us, I think, a lot to learn what, how the fire service operates. And hopefully, they get some information, and they actually get to see who sits on the fireboard and the city council. The other item I wanted to mention is today at 10 o'clock, I was over in Foster City with Mayor Royce and Councilmember Ahmad, and also Chief Frye, for an event signifying a kickoff for a statewide initiative that the League of California Cities is sponsoring. This initiative will basically attempt to preclude the state of California from rating the cities and counties' sales tax, property tax, and transit taxes. And we're hopeful to garner enough signatures to put this on the ballot in November. And I think it's something that's well overdue, that each house should keep itself in order. That's sort of the way I would like to look at it. The cities and counties do a marvelous job of trying to balance their budgets, and as soon as we do that, then unfortunately, the state comes in and throws a monkey wrench in it by just sort of borrowing or taking our money. And what we're trying to do is say, folks, if you wanna, if you need money, go raise it, but we're doing our job, and we'd like you to do yours. So just wanted to mention that, that you'll be seeing more in the press about that. And if you're so inclined, I'm sure a signature would be well appreciated to try to keep our funds that are basically ours in the city of San Carlos.
Thank you.
Just one announcement. On January 19th, the Board of Supervisors for San Mateo County is having an informational meeting about the 42 citizen advisory boards and commissions. So if anyone watching or in the audience wants to know what the county does, more with government, and how you could become involved, it's January 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 400 County Center in Rebel City. That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, personal shout-out to a friend, Dr. Regina Benjamin. I know a number of members of the council and of San Carlos have taken time to go out to areas that were hit by Hurricane Katrina, and this is a note of interest. Dr. Benjamin was the founder of the Biobatry Rural Health Clinic in Biobatry, Alabama. This was a town that was hit very, very hard by Katrina. But Dr. Benjamin received her M.D. from the University of Alabama, received an MBA from Tulane. She spent several years moonlighting in emergency rooms and in other hospitals to keep her practice open, which she eventually turned into a rural health clinic. In 2005, that clinic was destroyed by Hurricane Katrina. There was a massive effort to rebuild it, and on New Year's Day 2006, the day before, they were to reopen the clinic, it was burned. She has since then rebuilt the clinic. But Dr. Benjamin is just one of the most inspirational people you'll meet. She was elected to the AMA Board of Trustees, the first physician under 40, and the first African-American woman to be elected to that board. She has numerous awards to her name, including receiving a National Caring Award, which was inspired by Mother Teresa. She was awarded the Papal Cross of Honor by Pope Benedict XVI. Most recently, she was named to the MacArthur Fellows Program, so she was one of those people who won the Genius Award. And I'm personally just extremely proud that today, she was sworn in as our newest Surgeon General. So somebody from that area, something that we have a deep connection to in San Carlos, is now our Surgeon General and leading the healthcare charge. So I'd just like to extend my congratulations to her.
Thank you. I have a couple items, actually. I see two of our chamber people are actually current CEO Cheryl and David, our new CEO-to-be. The Chamber does have its annual gala coming up in about a week and a half, a week from Wednesday on the 20th, Hotel Sofitel, recognizing any beautification business awards, and especially our Citizen of the Year, Neil Chicasola. So I encourage you to go to their website and attend this most joyous, great affair. Sofitel does a great job with that event. Second item I would like to just bring up, I have talked to the city manager, but I just wanted to get a flavor here from city council. When, of course, I became mayor just a few weeks ago, one of my ideas was to reach out and to communicate to the people of San Carlos. One idea is to have a monthly newsletter on our webpage. I actually, both our city manager and I have looked into this. We need to be very careful with what's called our Fair Political Practices Act, that I'm not advertising for myself by using the website and so forth. And so in talking to the FPPC, there are no regulations on internet usage. What my proposal is, is to limit city resources. There would just merely be a link from our city page to my own webpage, which would be basically a monthly newsletter that people would be linked to. I'm recommending that we try it for a few months, and at a future point in time, maybe three months later, we actually consider a couple things. One, of course, would be linking other council members on the webpage, since there may be newsletters that other council people may want to do beyond the mayor. And of course, the other consideration, I think we need to look at regulations as we get into an election period of time, that we would actually have a quiet period, where there would actually be no benefit to a mayor or a council member on the webpage. There are some very strict rules and so forth that we need to look at. So I wanted to go ahead and recommend it, actually, Mark had recommended maybe putting this agenda item on our, this item on the next council meeting, to basically come up with at least a start of a newsletter, a way to communicate to the public. But we want to make sure we do all the right things on how we proceed with that. With that, any feeling from council? Are you okay with that, or any issues or questions?
It'll be on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Andy? Great. So Mark, you have that action on, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. And that's all I have. So moving on, we have a big door closing, and we also have a very special presentation. We have three gentlemen in the office that have earned their Eagle Scouts Award. They are Kenny Crone, James Smith, and Paul Karp. And I would like to invite these three gentlemen. I'll be joining you at the podium, and I have a proclamation for each of you. Come on up. So I have in front of me a proclamation for each of you for your accomplishments and the achievement of our Eagle Scout Award. Let me just kind of read a few words what is in the proclamation from the city to each of you. Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America is a character-building organization composed of young men who are seeking to prepare themselves to be better leaders and citizens. And again, I'm just paraphrasing a few items here. Whereas, scouts plays a vital force in the lives of hundreds of boys in the city of San Carlos, guided by many volunteer, adult volunteers. Whereas, a special and unique honor of achieving the highest award of scouting has been earned. And by each of the three of you, it there be resolved that I, as mayor, congratulate each one of you. So with that, I have, I'll put this down. In fact, why don't you hang on to that a little bit. Kenny Crone, Paul Karp, you guys even stood in the right order. My God, and James Smith. And with that, since you have the microphone, you would be welcome if you could just spend a minute and talk about what your project, your final project for Eagle Scout was, or anything you learned about it. You'd be welcome to, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm James Smith, 17. I go to Carman High School, and I'm a junior. My project was at Borromeo Hall and saying, at St. Charles Church in San Carlos. I built a seven-foot bench and a message board, and I also did some landscaping, took out some old dead bushes, and replaced them with a brick retaining wall and some new bushes.
I'm Paul Karp. I go to Bellarmine. I'm 16 and a junior. My project was at Memorial Park. I put in a flagpole and labeled native plants with four-by-four posts with signs on them. And also, I put in some of the native plants.
I'm Kenny Crone. I'm a senior at St. Francis High School. I'm 18. I re-landscaped an island on Gover Lane in San Carlos. We took out all the existing plants on the island, and we put in an irrigation system, and we put new trees and plants on the island with a path down the middle. I'd really like to thank Frank Fenara and Guy Wallace for the city, who really helped me plan the project, and all the neighbors that helped me out.
And they're back here, right in the...
Frank and Guy.
Guy, thank you very much. Thank you. Great.
Thank you. And I'd just like to end. Are you guys free this coming Saturday?
Great. Congratulations very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Item six on the agenda is public comment. This is an area where the public is free to speak on any item that is not on the current agenda. I believe I have three or four speaker slips. Let's see here. Start off with Frank first, please. Come to the podium for public comment. And next in line will be Susan Tatum, if you could kind of get geared up. And if you could do this in about a two-minute timeframe, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, members of the council, first of all, excuse my accent. I would like to bring to your attention the plausible condition of Bayview Drive from 77 Bayview until the intersection of Deuten Avenue. This may well be the worst street in San Carlos. It has so many potholes that local residents regularly go out of their way to avoid it. Over the years, folks have complained about Bayview notable to people at Bayview Villa. I have twice brought the situation to attention to Mr. Gilbert and once to Mr. Wiley. They admit the street is in bad shape, but other than for excuses, nothing happened. Occasionally, budget here, budget there, nothing else has been done. It's a forgotten miserable excuse for a street. I'd like to suggest to the council members, visit the street and see for yourself. You might see what I and others drive through every day, and visit us to the Bayview Villa's historic living facilities have to condemn with. Wonder why the problem has been so persistently ignored for over a decade. I and other residents want an explanation. From the city inaction of the street in areas such as Exeter, Beverly have been properly maintained by the city. So if I can meet residents' maintenance expectation, those streets were not Bayview. The county has done a good job maintaining Deuten Avenue. Perhaps if the city can't or want to care of Bayview, I should consider conveying it back to the county. Whoever decide, whatever you decide, we'd like to, regarding the future of the Bayview. Thank you for your attention.
Great.
If you want to have a CD here, you can see the street.
That's a photograph there you have for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, if you could give that to our city clerk, that'd be great. And we'll get our city manager, public works person, to get back to you on this. Okay? Great. Please, come on up. Susan Tatum?
That's me.
Come on up.
Hi. I'm here to ask that the council give the city staff members some guidance on construction hours when they prepare the new general plan, or the details of the new general plan. I did a little research, and I gave the city clerk copies of my research, which show the construction hours that are approved for the mid peninsula cities. San Carlos has the most liberal, least restricted hours of any mid peninsula city. And speaking as someone who likes to sleep in on the weekends, and has had already one year ruined by construction behind me, and now is going to have a new year ruined by construction next door to me, I would really like you to consider restricting hours a little bit, maybe Sundays off, or Sunday mornings off, whatever works for you. But right now, it's 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 5:00, Saturday and Sunday, and all holidays. So there is no day currently free of construction noise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next two speakers, we have Cheryl Palmerink and Pat Bell. Pat, if you could get ready, and Cheryl, welcome.
Hi, I am Cheryl Palmerink with the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, I am retiring at the end of the month, and it is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you and to the community my replacement, the new CEO of the San Carlos Chamber, David Bouchard. And I've asked Dave to introduce himself a little bit, just so you know his background.
Cheryl, thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. It is my pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm delighted to have been selected to be the new leader of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. It's a well-run, managed organization that has served this community for so many years, and I'm just happy to be a part of the continuing tradition of the Chamber. I also know that there is a very strong working relationship between the city and the Chamber, and I look forward to continuing that relationship as well. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate this opportunity to introduce myself to you and the community. I know we'll have more opportunity in the future to personally meet each other as well. So thank you very much for your time.
David, on behalf of the council and the city, welcome to San Carlos.
Thank you.
And also, there was a stat, I just heard this last week. You know, we are a small town, we have a small downtown, and I believe we have small business. Eighty-five percent of the business membership in the Chamber are small businesses.
Yep.
And you guys do a great job. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Pat? Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I want to know where to sign this petition, Mr. Grisilli. I've been hearing about this darn petition for at least weeks, and I can't find one.
I'll get the information to you.
Thank you. The lobby of City Hall would be a good place.
We'll get it to you.
If that's legal. Thank you.
Okay, with that, is there anybody else that would like to public comment on any items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, close that public comment. Let's go on to the consent calendar. Item number seven, A, B, and C. Any comments from council? Action on these items? Somebody want to poll it? Oh, wait a second. Wait, wait. I do have, thank you Vice Mayor Ahmad, we do have speaker slips on seven C. Let's go ahead and hear those people speak. We have Susan Emerson and Ann Iverson on seven C. You're welcome to speak now. Seven C is adoption of execute documents, $147,000 for energy-efficient block grants to the state of Department of Energy, and appropriate $41,000 from the general fund to pay for the city share of building energy efficiency project. Please, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Good evening. Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos, here on behalf of San Carlos Green. I know that there were limitations to what could be included in the grant applications, and that for that reason, the only things that are addressed there are the building, lighting, vending machines, and LED streetlights. There are a lot of other things we can be doing to make the city's operations more energy efficient. I would encourage the city to approach this as the seed money for a revolving fund, so that in future years, some of that savings in the cost of what we would have been paying for the city's energy can go into attacking some of those additional items of energy efficiency, so that by the time we're done, everything with a 10-year return on investment, or something along those lines, that makes sense for San Carlos, can be funded and taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Iverson, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, Ann Iverson, 199 Sycamore Street. And I ditto that. My comments are very similar, but I think we should be approaching this with a little more vision and long-term thinking. Using the grant money on lighting and vending improvements is great. It's our largest energy use. But I was disappointed to see that some of the money wasn't used for a long-term plan, a self-funding energy efficiency plan, where we could build and use that cost savings to go further. There's things like HVAC, building envelope, park lighting, and vehicles that could be, this money could be, also be applied for in the future. Most energy efficiency plans are five- or 10-year plans. This is how they normally are funded. There's, once you get, you know, some funding, it's a self-funding plan. And we have an opportunity right now to establish a plan like this, and using the money one time, and going back to business as usual, I think is a little short-sighted. I would really urge the city to use it for a plan, and to continually reinvest the savings into further energy efficiency. It also helps to further our climate action plan goals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of consent calendar items seven A through C.
Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, approving of the consent calendar. Recall? Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce? Yes. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight. These are reports to council. We have one report. Chief, I guess, this would be Chief Frye, talk about the pandemic flu. Come on up.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've submitted to you a report based on the county plans and protocol of what's been occurring regarding the pandemic flu. And this was one of our strategic plan objectives, to get this information to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to this.
Any questions to the council members?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, swine flu stinks. It is a miserable, miserable way to spend the holidays.
You had it, huh?
Yeah, not fun. Should have seen you before the holidays, but...
Okay, sounds like a great report. No questions.
Just a little late. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, item number nine is public hearing. Have consideration of abandoning a 10-foot wide sewer in public utilities across the lands of Cassidy and Corralge at 1,001 to 1,021 Washington Street. Mr. Wile gives a report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. This is a abandonment in a commercial area, and the, it's basically an alley-type situation in the back of the properties to be abandoned. And there's actually buildings over this easement, and it's cleaning up title, basically, as part of a parcel map that was previously approved by the city council. So it's a routine action, and I would recommend approval. I did want to take this opportunity to mention a kind of a policy shift on the abandonments in residential areas. The, in the past, it's pretty routine that when people ask to have an extra five feet of right-of-way abandoned back to them, we, the city would grant that. But in the, recently, we found that we actually need that extra right-of-way in a lot of cases for compliance with the Americans' Disabilities Act. So I've been, in the past few months, I've been turning down those types of applications. You know, we put in a number of curb ramps, and we found that we were constrained because we didn't have, in some cases, we didn't have the right-of-way that we needed to put the curb ramps in properly. So one, homeowners come in and said, please, please, abandon the right-of-way. And I said, no, I really can't recommend that at this time. So the change to that practice, you probably won't see as many of those in the future. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions on this, or that, that policy shift.
Yeah, Councilmember Ahmad, question?
No question.
Oh, I thought you had one. Mr. Klein?
I have a hearing.
Okay, so let me, I do have a speaker card, one on this. Bob Black, you pass on that, Bob? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move to close public hearing.
Second. There's motion, a second, close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. Mayor, move introduction of resolution number 2010-dash...
Number two?
Resolution of the City Council, the city of San Carlos abandonment of 10-foot wide sewer and public utilities across the lands of Cassidy and Quater Minijade at 1,001 through 1,021 Washington Street.
Second. First and a second, recall? First, chief? Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Okay, now... Okay, now we're on to 10. There are three agenda items on 10. Appointments to subcommittees, public hearing on solid waste, and proceeds on the sale of Holly and Industrial. A, B, C, cover one at a time. So 10A is appointment of subcommittee and ad hoc committees for 2010. Let me open this up by saying, in past years, generally, mayor's gone through meeting like this and has made appointments. What I try to do is provide an advanced copy of what my recommendations are, give everybody on council a chance to kind of look, look at this, look at balance, look at how they could contribute. This is very, very important, that we allocate all of our resources and use our people well. We spend time on council and the RDA, but we also spend a lot of time on these boards and joint power authorities and so forth, and getting things done with various partnerships that we have through the city. With that, I would like to go through the two pages, and if there are any comments or recommendations or any changes, I would like to hear that from members of their city council. Starting off, let's go, start from the top, but I think what I'll say is that the top item is the advanced life support, which kind of goes hand-in-hand with halfway down the page with emergency services council, which also goes down to the second to the last item, which is the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department JPA. Those three pretty much go hand-in-hand. The businesses are related, and generally, the people that represent those committees sit on all three of those. And the fire JPA is a very, very important, most critical to the city of San Carlos. This is one that I would like to actually hear and get some comments. I put a couple stakes in the ground as a starting point with Councilmember Ahmad and Councilmember Klein as representatives for this JPA. But I'd like to kind of, again, go maybe from left to right here and hear any of your thoughts or comments before we finalize this. Mr. Grocott, any thoughts you have on this?
Sure. With the fire board, I think I'm a little concerned about making a wholesale change to the fire board. I know Belmont potentially could be doing the same thing. And so that would be a, just across-the-board, complete change of the fire board, and I don't think that would serve the organization very well to take away all its history and its board members. There's, there's a lot to understand about the fire department and the way it operates and the way the paramedic arm of it operates, hazmat, et cetera. And I think there's a lot of knowledge there that Bob and I have, having been on the fire board as long as we have. I'm certainly interested in continuing. I'm slated to serve as the chair of the fire board. That is something that rotates back and forth between San Carlos and Belmont. And last year, Belmont had the chairmanship. So we're slated for that this coming year. And it is something that I would like to do, and I'd like to serve for another year. I haven't talked to Mr. Grisilli about what his, you know, wishes or desires are, whether he wants to continue on or not, but I certainly would. You are correct, by the way, about, at least with ALS, I'm not sure with the emergency services council that it necessarily has to be connected. It can be or it cannot be, I believe. But with, with the ALS, it definitely needs to be connected because of the paramedic arm of it. And just a note, it's a little off-topic, but in the past, I noticed here with airport land use and airport roundtable, we have a little bit different with Ahmad and Grisilli, and then with roundtable, Ahmad and Grocott. And historically, at least, we've had those also be the same individuals.
Well, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Grocott, that four years ago, when you and I went on that, we were, we were brand-new, I believe, on the, on the fire board. Or you'd be on the year before. I don't remember, because I was a newly-elected councilperson. But I thought Mr. King and Mr. Eaton were on before, and we came on together.
I think we may have, yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, I just, just so that it has, I'm not saying it.
But at that time, it was a, not only was it, you know, across-the-board sweep, but we were dealing with a department that had been taken apart.
Oh, I understand. But what I'm saying is also, the two people that were on it were not on the council anymore. So it was an automatic, there had to be two new people on. I just want to make sure that historically, everybody understands.
Although, from the Belmont side, that was not the case.
That's true.
Orland and Dave Warden had been on the South County.
I agree. But I just wanted to make sure that, from a historical sense, it has happened before, good or bad, whatever, but it did happen. You know, my philosophy is, is I'm willing to serve wherever I'm needed. If the mayor feels we need new blood on that, there's certainly a learning curve on any of these committees that we serve on. I serve on the city and county association of government, and I can guarantee you, there was a learning curve when I was appointed to that three years ago. And certainly, the same thing with the sewer board, that I've been on for three years. There is a very large learning curve there, but it's, it's not, they're not insurmountable. We have good staff with our fire chief and with our other staff to work on this, and plus the fact, if it was a brand-new group of folks, I am sure that the people that were appointed are not going to, not ever ask us questions about what, what happened or what, what went on, because certainly, you know, there is some historical knowledge there. I, you know, my philosophy is that the mayor chooses that, that we should be replaced, we should be replaced. Somebody has to, if we're on there forever, there's never going to be a transition to some new ideas or some new thoughts. Having said that, I'm more than willing to serve on there again. And if, and if it comes down to it, I would appreciate that the mayor would, would not necessarily have to have the burden of choosing, but allow the council to choose if one or one of us or both of us staying on there, as opposed to just making a call or flipping a coin. So again, I understand what, what the mayor's trying to do here. I appreciate different ideas and different folks, and I, and I expect that if people are appointed to new positions on any of these boards, that they would use the resources of previous members to, to help them through whatever learning they would have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Klein?
Okay, well, I'm perfectly happy with your suggestion, Mayor Royce, and I think it's time for a change up there. We, we do need fresh blood. I think when you get so into something and you're so close to it, it's harder to see it from where everyone else is looking at it. And with all due respect to the council members who've served on it, I do think it's time for change. And so I don't know what your choice is going to be on this, if you're going to go with your original decision or leave it up to us to discuss and decide. I'll wait to make further comments when you tell us what, what method you're going to use for us to decide who sits on this. But I am fully confident, it's Councilman Ramad and myself, and that we'll do a good job, and we will lean on Councilmember Grisilli and Grocott for history and previous members who've sat up here on fire boards who are no longer on the council. So that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor, I view these board and committee assignments as at the pleasure of the mayor. These, these are fine. Wanted to address two points for the airport committees.
I'm just talking about fire first here.
Just fire?
Just, just those three, yeah. I'm going through the, the advanced life support, the emergency services, and Belmont, I want to tackle that one first. That's such a huge one, and then we'll go down through the rest of them.
Then I'll, then I'll restrict my remarks to that. In terms of ALS, I think it's fairly well-known that I did spend most of my college career working as an EMT, so I'm, I'm happy and eager to get into that work. And I think it has been fairly well-stated that most of the folks on this council, in fact, all of us, do our homework, and we put the time in to make certain that we come to meetings prepared. And I completely respect the learning curve and look forward to the support from my colleagues on the council to help support this transition.
Okay. Well, thank you all for, for your thoughts here. Let me kind of share a little bit what I'm thinking here, after hearing what you've had to say. I, I do think it's kind of a balance between the stability of the organization and also change, making change. I do want to see some change, for sure, and at least for one member. As far as the stability of the board, my interpretation of talking to people over the past week is our members and our current two members here to my left have worked very hard in building this JPA, along with the Belmont City Council. It works very well. It's stable. It's been operating now for four or five years. And as far as being able to, to actually bring in new members, while we may be bringing two more maybe unexperienced people on the board, I would look at more of their ability to be able to have the skill sets and the motivation to come up to speed in, in that role. And I do think they have a luxury. It's not like the first meeting, they're going to have to know everything there is about fire. Secondly, I think the, it is really important to, to look at the entire team. There, as Mr. Grocott said, there will be also a complete turnover at the Belmont City Council, or could be. However, we do have the luxury that three of the, I believe, three of the four elected city council people have past experience with the fire board. We, we probably will have either at least one, if not two, people from city council from Belmont with that fire board experience that will be part of that four-membership board. The other item, of course, is, is, is being able to work, work with people and work with, with the team. I think it's, it's inherent in the nature of being on city council that you have to work with other cities, you have to work with citizens, you have to work with organizations. And I think that, that skill set, you generally have it, and if you have any improvements for it, you definitely need to get it, because that's how things get done in city government, is, is with people. And the fire board is no different than the library board or, or any of the other airport and all these other boards that we actually deal, deal with. And I think my, my, my last point is why I'm looking for some change here is, I refer back to my earlier comments, the stability of the board, it works very well, but city of San Carlos has some tremendous challenges in front of it. We are looking at all sorts of opportunities, and we need people with some creativity, with some research skills, with some people able to roll up their sleeves and really understand that business, more so than anybody has ever done before in the past. And I think by, by bringing in some, some fresh, you know, talent, working with the city of Belmont and, and that team, it's a nice balance. We could keep the, the value and, and the strength of the existing JPA, keep that going, but also look at all the other business models that are out there and the opportunities that we need to look at as the city of San Carlos to provide the best of fire services, the best of paramedic services for the future of our city. It's most critical. It's, it's, it's life and death many times to the citizens that live here. So with that, I have tremendous confidence in the two people that I am recommending. One is very experienced. He kind of joined me, Mr. Omar, with me two years ago. I'm very impressed in his management skills and his technical skills and his getting things done and his understanding and his patient skills. Councilmember Klein comes on, he's new. But I've spent many hours with Mr. Klein talking about fire and talking about a lot of other city issues. He is probably the most prepared council member that I've come across. I've only come across a few, but I would say he's, he's more prepared than I was. He really makes a, an effort and investigates and researches and talks to people. And that's the kind of enthusiasm and skill set that I would like to see on the fire board. So with that, that would be my recommendation is as recommended on the, the sheet here in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have a question.
Mr. Grocott?
I have a question and perhaps a comment. One is, I hear what you're saying, and about skill sets, creativity, you know, knowledge and so forth, enthusiasm. And I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm wondering, okay, what does that say about the current fire board members? It sounds to me like you're asking for change just for the sake of change, as though that's going to create something great and new, and, and as though something's great and new needs to be created. And yet, we're also saying it's a great department. I'm not sure I'm grasping what exactly the, the reasoning is. My comment is this, since I've been on council in, in two, you know, two terms, when I first came on council, you know, being a freshman council member, I just accepted the assignments that I was given by, it was either Mr. King or Mr. Eaton. I think Mr. Eaton was the mayor at that time when I first came on. And you just come on, and you don't question things. I don't even think anybody asked me what I wanted to do. It was just, we were at the meeting, and, you know, there were some openings because of the Sally Mitchell going off the council and so forth. But, so I got my assignments, and I stuck with them until, you know, some opportunities came for, for change because of, again, people coming off of the council after an election and an opening coming up in one of these positions. But never on my term as a, in my years as a council member, was a person who was in a position asked to step down to make room for others to take a position by the mayor. If, if a person volunteered and said, you know, I'm, I'm kind of tired of this position, I don't want to do it anymore, that opened it up, and another council member would come in and serve. But never was something done like what's being done tonight, which is basically telling two, two members of a board, you're no longer serving on that board, we're, we're taking you off, and we're going to replace you and put somebody else on. That bothers me a little bit.
Well, if I could respond to that, I think it's directed more towards my assignments here. I, I guess it comes from what, what you're used to. My, my business experience is, is I worked for a high-tech company in Silicon Valley, where I changed jobs every two to three years. I went from finance to IT to operations manager to the credit union to acting CFO of startups. Every two years, max three years, you would change. And change is no fun, but change is good. And it wasn't, had to do anything with the prior person's skill set. It's just that in a dynamic organization, you move people around. You give people a couple of years, they make their contributions, they move on to something else. People don't, in that type of environment that I'm used to, and I'm very proud of it, things get done because things change. People change, technologies change, products change. It has no reflection on the people that were there for two years didn't do a good job. So I, I think we are in, actually, a stable environment where we're not going to be creating chaos. And I do think there is a lot of, of decision-making on, on, on budget and paramedic service and cost, that we are, are at, you know, 59% of safety cost of our general fund. And, and there are going to have to be some, 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 some hard calls. So I look at change as, as a very positive thing, not as a negative thing. But it's just because that's what I'm used to in my environment.
Then I would like to add one more comment.
Please, sure.
You've made change in one area, and as you point out, that, when you serve on the Belmont Fire Board, you serve on two others. And when I, I went through this and I looked at the assignments, we've got Mr. Ahmad in the number-one position on eight of these assignments, Mr. Klein, three, yourself, five, Mr. Grisilli, two, and myself, two. And in fact, when you add up the total assignments, we've got between being in first position or second position, and it's, and I'll grant you, some of these are a tandem position, like fire board or school, two-plus-two committee. Going down that list of the combined, we've got Mr. Ahmad in 10 positions, Mr. Klein in eight, Mr. Royce in six, Mr. Grisilli in six, and Mr. Grocott, myself, in four. So I think by making that change, one of the things that's not been looked at is a balance of assignments and changes in other places, you know, whether it be SB, SBSA or... you know, whether it be SBSA or whatever. You know, I think most of these things have been left alone, except to add Mr. Klein, except for the Fire Board.
So again, if, I know Mr. Klein wants to speak, but I just want to cover that. For balance, I did look at the entire list. There are things like Wheeler Plaza, Transit Village. There are commission assignments. I think there's a lot more balance when you look at all the things that we do. Although, I would agree, Mr. Grocott, you were, when I got through on the light side, I actually, there is one item which I called you on, one of the items that I'm on a JPA on, that I've been on for two years. It's a great organization, don't need to identify what it is. And I asked you if that's something that you'd want to get involved with. And of course, you had the prerogative, you said no. But this was an area where I was comfortable, I thought I was doing a good job. I think there's great opportunity, but I'd been there a couple of years. I wanted to change to something different and wanted to ask if you wanted to take on a new responsibility in an area. So there were attempts in talking to some of the council members to try to change and get other people involved in other areas. With that, Mr. Klein, you have a comment?
I just think it's worth mentioning that Belmont has swapped out in this Fire Board, and we haven't. So there has
Okay, what?
They've swapped out members, Belmont has, but we haven't as in San Carlos, and this is going to be one of these hot-button issues. And to go with what Mr. Grocott said about being a freshman council member, I asked for this. I sent you a list twice, I think, of what the things I wanted to be on. So I was definitely proactive, and the Belmont Fire Board was number one on my list of assignments because I feel strongly about it. So I'm, you know, I'm not just sitting, taking dictation. We actually had a good conversation about it, and I think Randy agreed with me on why. I felt there were certain areas that we could do different things on, or we could go look at other options, or, you know, just go a different route, or just a different route of thinking. So I think that's, I don't think it's anything against the current Fire Board members. I think it's just when you approach someone and you bring a different viewpoint, that's the difference. It is a different viewpoint. But it's not saying that you guys have done a bad job. It's just saying, maybe it's time for a different viewpoint.
Any other comments on fire? So what I'd like to do is, let's go through the whole list, and I'll entertain a motion. I would like to get acceptance from the entire council in approving this. If there's a majority that doesn't want to approve this, then we'll back up and we'll break it apart in a few pieces. But let's go, continue through the rest of the items, and then we'll vote on the entire thing. So with that, I'd like to talk about the next two items are the Airport and Land Use Roundtable. Any comments on those two?
Mr. Mayor, land use meets fairly infrequently, and I know that Mr. Grisilli has backed me up on occasion and has good background in that respect from his work on CCAG. It tends to deal with land uses that are in and around the SFO area. We don't actually have a lot of interaction with there, but we are called upon to handle quorum issues. The Roundtable is actually quite a bit more active. It does meet on a monthly basis. Supervisor Mark Church is the chair for that. I will, I'm a pilot, and that's why I was so excited when I first came on council to get these two committees. But again, if there's consent from council that somebody else wants it, I'm happy to entertain.
Anybody else on that?
I'm afraid of flying, so.
Bummer.
Okay.
Weren't you in New Zealand?
Australian, yeah. Over open water, too.
Yeah, heavily medicated.
Okay, next item then is the Association of Bay Area Government called ABAG. I have myself as mayor and vice mayor listed on that. Anybody else? Okay, then we have the CCAG, which is the City-County Association of Governments. Mr. Grisilli, want to talk about that, or any comments you've been on that, learning curve?
Happy to serve if the mayor...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment. I'm seeing our former mayor, Tom Davids, in the audience. And when I was running, I asked him a very straightforward question. How much time does council take? And he gave me that answer. Says, oh, you know, it's probably going to take, and he gave me a number of hours per week. What I didn't tell me was how much time we spend on committees. And if he had told me that, I might have rethought my strategy. But one thing I did want to point out, Mr. Mayor, is that San Carlos is not an island. We work in San Mateo County, and one of the things that we have to do is work with other cities and specifically within the county. And CCAG, the City-County Area Government, is an incredibly important function. It puts San Carlos into a position to compete for regional monies, compete for regional projects, and actually have our concerns and those of San Carlos citizens heard. Mr. Grisilli has served the last year as vice chair for CCAG. He's done an exceptional job and has really helped San Carlos. And it's, I'm excited just to take the moment to say, he has done a spectacular job, and personally, I wanted to say thank you for his hard work on CCAG. It's made a difference.
Thank you.
And then we have, there's two subsets of the CCAG. One is the Congestion Management Air Quality, and the other one is the Regional Housing Needs. I have Mr. Grocott on the first and myself on the regional housing, kind of ties into HART, which is coming up here a little later.
Mr. Mayor, there's actually three. You have listed the San Mateo County Bicycle Committee, and that's a
Oh, that's the subset of that?
That's a subset of CCAG, yes.
So that was actually missing from our last year, so that's where that would go. And you would be on the bicycle. So what is the formal name of the San Mateo?
CCAG, CCAG-BPAC.
BPAC, okay. Thank you. Okay. Two plus two, which is two council members and two from our school district. I have, actually, a two-member. I have Royce and Klein on that. Comments?
Went to the schools, that's why I asked for it, so.
Okay.
I didn't quite hear that comment. What was your?
I went to the schools, that's why I asked Mayor Royce that. I thought it would make sense to put me on it.
Okay. The Housing Endowment Regional Trust, I've served on that seat for the last two years and plan to continue, called HART. Next is the Library Governing Board, JPA. That's about eight or nine cities that consolidate that basically have the county run our libraries.
So, Mr. Royce, I have a question for you on that. I know what I told you in our conversation, I wasn't interested in taking it on, but looking over this list and also taking in consideration, I don't want to bring up personal affairs too much, but I know sometimes your, I think your treatment tends to be in the morning. I don't know if that's a conflict or creates a scheduling conflict for you, but I'd be willing to take that on if you would like.
I think it's a great organization, and I'm willing to give that, you know, if anybody would like to take that, that'd be wonderful. Would you be interested?
Yeah, if you want to just swap.
That'd be great. We could switch those. That'd be great.
I'll be the primary, you be the secondary.
Thank you very much. And they actually have a new CEO that just has come on board in the last few months. Great opportunity to get involved. The Convention Bureau, I have Klein.
I'm just, I know nothing about them.
Yeah, and if Councilmember Grisilli still wants to do it, that's, it made my list by the bottom, just because a lot would be fun. Yeah, and it's a free lunch.
Actually, it's not a free lunch, but it used to be. It used to be a free lunch, but it's no free lunches anymore. But it's just, it's just basically, I've gone to some of the events. I think it's a, we don't have a lot of hotels in this facility, in San Carlos, but again, no, I think it's important to realize that our county is very vibrant in convention and visitors. And I just had an affinity for that kind of work. So either way, you and I, or I'll go first, or you go second, whatever you want to do. There's no meetings that you go to for this. There's events that they have every single month. I go to probably two or three events a year. Maybe they're going to have their installation in January, and again, it's not, it used to be maybe free, but it isn't a free lunch, and, which I'm happy to pay for, because I feel that it's important to have our face out there showing that we're part of the community.
Yeah, so I mean, why don't we just put me second? So, I mean, since there are so many events, I would still be able to attend, because Councilmember Grisilli's not going to attend everything.
No requirement here.
Yeah.
Our next item is basically our South Bayside System. That's basically our sewage going out to the bay. Very huge operation, actually, if you've ever been out there to see it. Mr. Grisilli's been on that, I believe, the last couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, just the last two years.
Two or three years, I can't remember. Time goes by so fast.
Sitting on the audience, used to be out there, and that, I remember. Okay. Any comments? Speak up. The Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance meets monthly. I have Mr. Ahmad.
Actually, I believe it's more or less quarterly.
Is it quarterly?
The
It does say quarterly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Congestion Relief Alliance has, they tend to run a lot of the shuttle programs. And it's likely that as PAMF is starting to get built up and as different issues around development come up, that the shuttle programs that Samtrans doesn't run, run through this agency. They just finished a strategic plan. It's a good group. And as Mr. Klein is there, I'm going to ask you to show up for next meeting and introduce you around.
Sounds good.
Okay. Page two, we have the, actually, these were two elected positions. Maybe, Mr. Ahmad, if you want to talk about San Mateo County Transit District and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers?
So, Mr. Mayor, Samtrans and the Joint Powers Board is Caltrain. These are elected seats that were chosen by the Council of Cities. I put my name into consideration and was elected to these seats in December. I believe these terms are coincidental with my term on city council. Samtrans, everybody is aware with what Samtrans does. The Joint Powers Board is the Caltrain Board. There are three members from San Mateo County, three from Santa Clara, three from San Francisco. It is the group that is most directly going to be working with the High Speed Rail Authority. Personally, I'm excited that, you know, we've got the Samtrans headquarters sitting here in San Carlos, and it's exciting to have somebody from San Carlos actually represented on these boards. We have an opportunity to look at service and look at how these things can be done. These are separate positions, and again, they were elected by the Council of Cities.
Thank you. And then we switch gears a little bit. These are the liaison responsibilities and relationships we have with our commissions of City of San Carlos. I have myself with Park and Rec, Mr. Ahmad with Economic Development Advisory Committee, Mr. Grisilli with Planning, Mr. Grocott with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and Mr. Klein with Youth Advisory and Arts and Culture. We had last year a general plan, but I believe now that the general plan, all that work has been done, so I've eliminated it.
Mr. Royce?
Yes, Mr. Grocott.
I would be interested in a little discussion on this. This is something that we instituted a few years back. And in fact, I'd be interested to hear from Mr. Klein, because he and I were working together, you might say, on the general plan, because he chaired it and I was the liaison. And I would be curious to know from Mr. Grisilli as well, with his time on the council, how he's found it to be. I guess for myself, I haven't found it to be all that useful. I know with Andy, when he was on, when he was chairing the general plan, the GPAC, no sooner did he update me on what was going on, and I planned on giving some kind of update at council. Generally, we would get something from staff, either in our council mail, or even an agenda item, or something in our council packet that updated us and sort of, you know, took away the need, if you will, to report. The only thing I could find that I imagine might have been comforting to Mr. Klein as chair was having a council member to talk to occasionally about an issue or two. I think originally in the startup of GPAC, Mr. Klein gave me a call a couple of times to ask about procedural things and my opinion. And it might have been nice to have that, but otherwise, I'm not sure of its usefulness. And the last comment I would make is, when I've attended, like, I've been to a couple of the Trail Committee meetings, and it feels like you're in a hawkish role. That's been my experience, where you're almost as though, you know, in the past, I will tell you this, council has avoided going to planning commission meetings and so forth, because, you know, we give people these responsibilities, we assign them to these committees, and we let them do their work. And we don't, you know, look over their shoulder. And that's what I mean by hawkish. Sometimes it feels like when you're there, you're, you might change the dynamic of what's going on, because, you know, they think, oh, a council member's in the room, and I should say this, or I should do that. I don't know how Mr. Rubens is on the Trails Committee, and I've been to one or two of those, if it changes the dynamic at all for a council member to be there. But I'd be interested to know what the other council members' feelings on that are.
Well, I agree with you about the fact of going to the meetings. I know there's another city, which I won't name, and they actually assign council members to their various committees, planning, art and culture, environmental. And these council members actually show up to these meetings and somewhat participate. Not really participate, but they're there. And I feel, just like you do, that I think you get people to volunteer for these committees, let them do their work. We don't need to be, you know, looking over their shoulder. Having said that, so I disagree with that other city, which I won't name, the way they do it. I think that's wrong. But what I do think is, you know, the word liaison is just exactly that. I think once in a while, and it hasn't happened too much to me in my experience, but it has happened a couple of times, where people would say, geez, you know, they at least have a person they could theoretically call. And I always go at least once or twice a year to all the committees that I've been on. And I only speak at the beginning for a couple of minutes in public comment or whatever, and then I leave. I don't stay. But just to say, hey, I'm here, this is how our council would like it to operate. If you have any questions and you don't know who to call, or you want to have some sort of a conversation or a dialogue, pick up the phone and do it. I think it's almost, it's not ceremonial, but I think it does give at least an opportunity for someone, if they have a question, that they have someone they can directly call that has experience or knows about what, you know, and again, like in planning, I was on the planning commission. So in this case, I would have a, you know, direct input of how things go and how things go with the council. So I agree that we shouldn't be there for the meetings, but I do think that it is nice to just have us available. And again, these are really almost nominal ceremonial things, but I still think it's a good idea to have us listed here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would echo what Mr. Grisilli said. I do not go to the EDAC committee meetings, but I have gotten a boatload of emails bouncing ideas off. What do you think of this? How about that? And I feel there is, there is an appropriate role in that respect. Hopefully, they felt it's of value.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. And I just, you know, I had that relationship with Councilman Grocott, and I think it helps, especially when you're a new chair, to have someone from the council you can talk to. As I got more comfortable, I reached out to other council members as well. But it's just, it's nice to have that as a startup. And with the, I was really interested in the Youth Advisory Council, and I think particularly with them, because they are younger. Having a council member they can call, or a council member they can email, who, you know, they know is readily available to talk to them, I think that just means something. So it is ceremonial, but it, you know, it's a good feeling to have.
You'd be like a brother, where I was like a grandfather. Yeah.
So, Mr. Royce, having asked the question, what I've heard from the council discussion actually is a little different direction. And if that direction is fine with the mayor, and that's what you would like us to do, that's fine. I'm happy to serve in that role as the others are. When we first thought of this, though, it was a little bit more proactive about attending meetings and so forth. And I didn't feel comfortable with that at the time. I didn't say anything. I thought I'd see how it worked. But if we are simply listed as sort of the go-to person, at least initially, for a council member, the other thing, I would just add this to, one thing we do have to be careful of is when we're called, not to drive the policy. That's not our role. We're to let that committee debate the policy and work it out on their own. So.
And I think it also lends itself that any of these commission members or chair people can approach any one of us.
Sure.
I mean, there's a name there. But I remember even the last year, I think Park and Rec had something going on. I think they actually had all their members contact each one of us and get input. I think that's good. So, Mr. Grocott, comfortable then with the proceeding? Any recommendations on any changes here, then, on the commissions? Okay, moving on. The subcommittees deal with, well, let me just, let's go, why don't I just put them all out? There's, we had an ad hoc finance There's, we have an ad hoc finance committee. Our two projects are Wheeler and Transit Village. We have High Speed Rail, and we have the Grand Boulevard Task Force. And by the way, the names on finance is Mr. Ahmad and myself. Wheeler is Griselli and Royce. Transit is Grocott and Klein. High Speed Rail is Mr. Ahmad, and Grand Boulevard Task Force is Mr. Grocott. Thoughts, recommendations, changes? As you know, these also take time. There's a couple of those that will start taking lots of time. And notice there were a couple I eliminated there that we don't have a need for anymore. Other associations, we have Harbor Industrial, Mr. Ahmad. The League of California Cities, I have the mayor and vice mayor, myself, Mr. Ahmad. San Carlos Green, Mr. Ahmad. San Carlos Together, myself. And Educational Foundation, Mr. Klein.
Mr. Mayor, what would offer for HIA, the Harbor Industrial Association? It does have regular meetings, monthly, I believe it's the first Thursday of the month. They meet at the Vans Restaurant. It is open to anybody. I tend to go, but I would encourage any council member to show up. We do have good representation from city staff, and it's a great forum for us to hear the concerns of the members of the Harbor Industrial area, what's going on with water, what's happening with power, what's happening with zoning. Belmont also does send a number of city council members and their staff, so I would just like to encourage more folks to show up.
I'm glad to hear that, because I watch the emails come through, and I wouldn't want this list to constrict attendance. There's times where, depending on the topic, I really anticipate going, and other times...
Would love to have you.
Yeah.
Good.
And the last item, I just, not a recommendation, but I want to make sure we at least consider, we had One Neighborhood Association, L'Oreola, which is now the Greater East Side San Carlos, and there also is now a White Oaks group that has developed, a guy named Ken Castles in process of organizing and doing a great job. So we kind of have two neighborhood groups. I'm not recommending any liaison role, but I do throw it out as kind of a pseudo-type association organization within our city, whether or not that needs any ties, I just throw that out. Do we feel that we need anything?
They contact us.
And they contact all of us.
They're fairly proactive.
Good, I'll just throw that out. Okay. So, again, I would like consensus from the entire group. Before we get that, I do have, I do have a public comment.
I'm sorry, just one item on that, because we commented that they do contact us. We, on the other hand, have to be very careful about getting back to them because of Brown Act violations. We don't, we can't respond to all, respond to each other, and we have to be careful about what we say to them.
So I do have on this agenda item 10A, one speaker, there may be others, welcome to speak, Brian Randall, you're welcome to speak, public comment on this item. And if anybody else would like to speak, you could come up and fill a speaker slip, a speaker card after you speak. Hello?
Hi. Brian Randall, San Carlos. Gentlemen, I have a lot of experience with the fire department here and previous to coming to this country. I saw how badly this fire department was going, and four years ago, with great effort, Councilman Grocott saved this fire department, and we have, still have, the excellent fire department of San Carlos. Safety is the biggest issue of all here, that is, with the police department and the fire department. If you don't have safety, you're in trouble. My feelings regarding what's been said this evening is that, at this critical time, we should have one councilman with four years of experience, and one newcomer on the fire board. It's so obvious, it's ridiculous. It is clear to me that for some reason, which you have not stated, you specifically want to remove Councilman Grocott from the fire board. Now, I hope that in the years come, we'll find out why this truthfully is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on these assignments? Okay, motion to close public comment?
I'll need to.
I don't think.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rubens.
There's, I was just looking down the list, and before the meeting, I took a look at the Fire Board JPA, and there's actually is a provision for an alternate contained in the JPA document. And I see the other categories all have an alternate, but this just has the two main assignments, so that's something you could take up tonight, or you could defer to a future meeting.
Mr. Rubens, I have a question on that. I actually didn't list that, because I was wondering if there was a, I'm sorry, I should have brought this up with you ahead of time. With an alternate that would allow three council members at a fire board meeting to acting, and one, is, are there any Brown Act, because three people would be involved, or the, because the alternate would be silent, it would not be a Brown Act?
Well, it's a public meeting involving a matter, you're allowed, there's an exception in the Brown Act to have attendance at a public meeting of a body, such as the fire board. But there would have to be a need to be careful not to communicate outside the alternate, but they wouldn't be voting at the, at the same meeting. The alternate would only have a vote when the, one of the other members was not available. So that's the way, I think, the way the JPA was drafted, with that in mind.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so let's do this. Why don't we do the hardest stuff first? I would, I think, like to maybe separate out the fire stuff first, and kind of get a little more, if there's any other discussion and a motion on that, and then get through fire, we could open up the rest of the assignments. How does that sound?
Mr. Mayor, are you sure you want a motion on this? Because in the past, we've always just, it is the mayor's prerogative to make the assignments. We consent to things, but we've never made a motion in the past.
No, I understand what you're saying. I do have the authority to say it's done. I would like to, because the importance of these assignments, I'd like to get the agreement on council, on these assignments, mainly on fire and everything else. I'd like to hear that. If there's no agreement, I'm flexible to make some change there. And in fact, I do have a comment to talk about fire board I would like to discuss before we do vote on that, but let me open it up to council. So first, we're going to talk about two items. Let's talk about South County, I mean, South, I'm sorry, Belmont-San Carlos Fire, which includes emergency services and advanced life support, and like to eventually get a motion on that, and then everything else.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Grocott on what he just said, I really do. I think you're setting a precedent here. I mean, I, you know, I don't mean to disagree with you, but you're going to set a precedent here, and you're going to somewhat, I mean, I guess it's, everything we do up here is somewhat political. I'm a little concerned, because, like, when you get to the alternate, well, you have, you have three possibilities for an alternate, yourself, myself, or Mr. Grocott. If all of us would be happy to do it, you're going to have a vote on the alternate, which is fine. I mean, we vote all the time, but the only votes we've ever made among ourselves is for mayor and vice mayor. And we can, you know, this just opens up, and again, it can be done, but I do agree with my fellow council member, that I really believe if you, if this is what you want to do, you have the right under the, under, you know, the city, whatever, to do it. And I'm worried about precedent here, that next year, let's say, whoever is mayor may choose to do it the other way, and there'll be a person, or even three years from now, somebody will come up and go, well, wait a minute, back in 2010, we voted on this. And I'm just, I don't know, I'm a little bit concerned about setting that precedent.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to echo Mr. Griselli and Mr. Grocott's comments. You have, I appreciate the opportunity to build consensus. But these appointments are at your pleasure, and I would support the decision of the mayor in this regard.
Whatever you do, you do.
Okay, so my recommendation is, in the staff report, with following change, the library government, governing board is Grocott, replacing Royce on that change.
But you're remaining as the alternate.
And I'll remain as alternate, and I don't believe there were any other...
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Griselli and I switched on the...
Yeah, I mean, from your recommendations...
Oh, on the travel...
The visitors bureau?
Okay. Okay, on the San Mateo County.
The visitor bureau, right.
So is that shared or switching? You're flipping on that?
Yeah, we'll switch on that.
We'll switch.
Wonderful. So those two are together, with those two changes.
And then you need an alternate to...
You need an alternate to appoint to the fire board.
Okay. Well, definitely, I would look at one of our experienced people. Are both of you willing to become an alternate to that?
I'm willing to become an alternate, if that's what you want, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Grocott.
Mr. Grocott?
Mr. Griselli wants to do it, then so be it.
Okay. I would then appoint Mr. Griselli as alternate for the fire board. So those three changes? Ms. Boland, you have those three? Great. And with that, I think we can move on to 10B.
Could I make one comment, please? Ms. Boland, I know you do this, but this is so important, because I know in a couple of these things, if you could, I know you notify all these different groups of our assignment, but if there's a way that you could get a confirmation from them that they received your email or your letter, because this year, I can guarantee you, there were folk sending me things, and I'm like, I'm not on this board. And it wasn't your end, I know you did the work, but it didn't get confirmed back, so thank you so much.
Got it, try.
I appreciate that.
Through the chair? I just wanted to clarify one thing. Since I've been here, we actually have had the council, I should back up. The rules and regulations, your code of conduct, allows the authority to be granted to the mayor to make these appointments. And it's very clearly stated in the rules and regs that the mayor has that authority. We have since, at least I've been here and perhaps even before, had the council ratify the appointments in their entirety, not item by item, but in their entirety. So there wouldn't be any precedent. I don't believe there's any requirement that that be done. But I just wanted to be clear with the council that by past precedent, the council actually has taken a motion to ratify previous mayor's appointments to these committees, at least during the last four years.
Mr. Royce, you're absolutely sure of that, because I don't remember doing that, but you're...
That is my understanding and recollection. And frankly, it was my recommendation when I first arrived here.
Okay. Well, I apologize, I didn't remember ever having that vote.
Like I say, I don't think it's required, and if you feel comfortable with the way that this is proceeded, that's fine.
I understand.
So, Mr. Rubens, knowing where we are now, what do you recommend?
Yeah, I think I'll second the city manager. It's, I have the policy in front of me, it's not required that you have a vote, but it doesn't hurt to give the authority to and ratify the vote as a group. I think it's procedural, it's almost ministerial in a way, because it is your call, but you could do it either way, it's not necessary, but we've historically done it that way.
Okay.
Well, hearing that, then, I'll make a motion to, or not a motion, I guess, is it a motion, Mr. Rubens?
It'd be a motion to ratify the...
Motion to ratify the mayor's selections for all these various committees and subcommittees that we have in the City of San Carlos, and regional board assignments.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any discussion before we vote here? Okay. Vote?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Thank you very, very much for your support, everybody. Thank you.
I don't remember that vote.
No. Whatever.
Okay, moving on to 10B. This is a consideration, a public hearing regarding increased rates of residential and commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Prop. 218. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. As most of the council will recall, each year at this time, staff comes before you and asks for permission to conduct a Proposition 218 hearing to set the annual solid waste rates for garbage collection and recycling. The rates are set based on a study done by a consultant known as Hilton-Ferencoff &amp; Hobson, HF&amp;H. We're somewhat at an interesting place in that this is the last full year of service by Republic Allied Waste, so this will be the last time theoretically that we'll be coming before you with this rate-setting format. In the future, the rates will be set based on an index rather than this study. This set of recommendations this year, there are basically three components for you to consider. First of all, the solid waste rates need to cover the actual cost of the service as calculated by the consultant study. Garbage service is paid for by the ratepayers, it is not a service that's paid for out of the city's general fund. To make up those costs this year, the rate will need to go up 8.1%. That covers both a 7.7% increase in costs at Allied Waste, as well as a new 4 tenths of a percent charged by the county for their AB 939 services. The second component of the proposed rate increase was discussed by council at your last meeting as part of your budget strategy session, and that is a recommendation from staff to increase the garbage franchise fee from eight to 10%. As you'll see in the table in the staff report, a number of the cities around us are at 10%, in some cases, it's even higher than that. The third piece of the rate is an optional component. We talked to you about this last summer. This is the so-called door-to-door hazardous waste program. You will probably recall, or many of you will recall, this was first discussed at a council strategic retreat, I believe over a year and a half ago. Council asked us to work with SBWMA to develop such a program, and we did. This is somewhat unique in that the service is sort of a custom boutique service. This is not done by Allied or Ecology, this is done by a company called Curbside Inc. And literally what happens is if residents wish to dispose of hazardous materials, or e-waste, or other materials along those lines, they would call the vendor. If San Carlos implemented this program, the vendor would ship you a box. You'd put the material in the box, put it on your front doorstep, and call, and they would literally, on a custom basis, come and pick it up. This one is an interesting one as well, in that unlike some of the other services that we've looked at in the past, the pilot in San Carlos, where San Carlos was either the first city or the only city interested, this one's very different, because there's been a lot of interest. Among the 11 SBWMA agencies, I believe nine are now interested in this program, and actually two, the City of Belmont and the City of Hillsborough, the city council has already approved moving forward with this program. In the way that it is constructed, because it is a pilot, similar to the ones that you've seen before on weekly food scraps, and also on battery and cellphone, the SBWMA, as a group, would be responsible for the marketing costs and the rollout. It would not fall on individual city ratepayers in the first year if you were to move ahead now. However, if you decide to, you like the program, but you want to wait a year or two, they would not do that, so that if we were to start the program in year two or three, the ratepayers would have to pay for the initial rollout cost, which would make the program a bit more expensive. Also, in the discussion of this program, and you, some of you, I'm sure, will recall this from last summer, we talked about the fact that the program, it's mandatory if you move forward with it, that it'd be offered for single family, but it's optional to move forward if you want to include multifamily, although interestingly, as you look at the numbers, the multifamily cost is much less, because there are fewer multifamily units. So staff is recommending, for several reasons, that if you move ahead with the household waste, that we recommend you do both single family and multifamily. One is because of the low cost of adding multifamily, the other is the fact that up until now, we really haven't done a lot of enhancements for multifamily, because their service is similar to commercial. So we haven't done some of the optional programs for multifamily, like the batteries and the cellphones and the organics that we've done for single family. So we think this is a unique opportunity for you to, at a relatively minor additional cost, to bring both groups together in this. So that's our recommendation. But again, I would stress to you that the first of the three components is mandatory, the other two are at your discretion, and staff would recommend that once council has some discussions on these three elements of the rate, that you give us direction on how you wish us to proceed there, and then that you authorize us to work with the city clerk and with staff to issue the Prop. 218 notice. If we get that authority, we will be back to you in the second meeting in March for the rate hearing. And the way that the rate works, just so you know, is under Prop. 218. If a majority of the property owners in San Carlos protest the rate, the rates do not go up. If a majority does not, then the rates would go into effect retroactive to March 1st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair?
Through the chair.
Sure, please.
Mr. Moore, you've given us two resolutions, option one and option two, so option two, just to be clear...
Yes.
Includes the hazardous household waste.
Correct, correct. That's the only difference.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
Yes, I have one question. You mentioned the element of the franchise fee, which is currently at 5%.
8%.
Right, and that was the question. These tables, I apologize, I should have asked you that before tonight. These tables are not up to date, because I believe Foster City is also at 8%. And I don't know where, you know...
Well, the table was done effective last March, and it was done by the consultant, HFNH. They were done as part of the performance hearing, as it's called. And so what may have happened, or it sounds like from the two council members probably did happen, is there were changes since that time. In the case of the San Carlos, the only reason it shows as 5% is because that's as of March, obviously, we increased it to 8% in the summer.
So my question is, with each percentage point increase, how much does that affect the rate overall? And I would take it that what you have in here in option one and option two includes going up to 10%.
That's correct. And that was based on your direction at the last meeting to do that, to move from eight to 10%. As you remember, that was one of the options that the city manager, Mr. Ball...
Each percentage point ends up being how much in the rates?
Percent.
1%?
Correct. It's based on the total gross revenue.
Right. Okay. That's my only question to staff, so...
Yeah, like I said, I was disappointed. I mean, I don't think these rates are up to date, and I'm not sure about these other cities, if San Mateo's higher or Burlingame's higher or whatever. I'm a little disappointed that you, why pick March? He said. I guess that's when we raised our rates last, I can appreciate that, but why wouldn't it be a current situation?
Well...
And again, I apologize, I should have asked you this before, but...
Okay.
I'm not thrilled with this.
Okay, the answer to the question is that in the past, this study was done as part of the performance hearing.
Understand.
This year, there is no performance hearing, so there was no update.
Okay, well, I'm disappointed in the consultant, I guess, you know? I mean, that didn't take a lot of rocket science to figure out, that's not right. So, anyway. The other question I had on the, on the Curbside Inc.,
Yes.
I'm a little concerned, I'm a little confused, but what's new there when it comes to garbage? So what we're basically saying is everybody's going to pay, every city person or residents in the city is going to pay 45 cents a month.
Correct.
Okay? Now, it says here, the flat per month per resident's cost approach places the risk of participation on curbside. Okay, now, it puts the burden on them to come and pick up whatever. But then it says, if the actual participation in the program is higher than the projected 5%, the company is obligated to make the collections. What does that mean?
What it means is, is that the assumption when the RFP was issued to the different companies, and they were the winner in effect, was that was assumed based on this service in other communities, that there's roughly a 5% participation rate.
Uh huh.
It's a three-year deal, so if, for example, in San Carlos, the participation rate is higher, Curbside has to do all the collection in San Carlos, even if more than 5% of our residents participate.
May I jump in here?
Sure.
So, the way I read that is all pay, some will use, and if the usage goes up higher, then the rate probably will go up higher in the future as well?
No.
When they come back to us?
No. No, what...
But the rate they're giving us is based on a certain participation level. So if the participation, if the demand goes up, how are they going to pay for it under that rate?
It's a, it's a three-year contract with Curbside, and so that was the reason we made the comment about the risk, quote unquote. If the participation in any city, including San Carlos, is above 5%, in theory, the vendor could lose money over that three-year period.
For three years, right.
Correct.
Okay. Well, the second, then the second, the next line says, if the participation is lower, the company is open to discussing increased public education to increased demand.
Correct.
So, why would the, why would the, I'm the company, I'd be happy if nobody called me. Okay? So what, I don't understand that sentence. If the participation is lower, the company is open to discussing increasing public education and increased demand. So in other words, we're not allowed to increase public education unless it's lower? I, I'm thoroughly confused by that sentence.
Well, again, this is a function of the way the RFP was structured.
Sure.
But the idea was that if the participation is abnormally low, defined as under 5%, then then the expectation would be that the vendor would work with SBWMA and the agencies to do more outreach to get it to 5%. The theory here is that 5% is an acceptable level.
I understand, I'm just trying to figure it out from a business standpoint, from Curbside's situation, I mean, so we're going to ask them to spend more money, if it's less than 5%, we're going to ask them to spend more money to help us pay for public education?
Correct.
So that's going to be in the contract?
Correct.
Is there going to be an absolute dollar amount there, or is there going to just be, hey, guys, we'd like you to kick in 10 bucks, or...
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I'll research that.
Okay, I mean, again, I should have asked these before. Mr. Moore, I apologize for putting you on the spot on this one, this, I should have called you today on this one, because it just, I, like I said, it's, to me, it's a great, why would you, if you were the company, why would you care? I mean, are they wonderful human beings and they just love to collect all this stuff?
Well, the other...
I mean, I don't know, I guess, my cynicism shows through when somebody's going to make us such a wonderful deal here.
Well, I think the other reason, when Curbside presented it, the SBWMA board, why they would want to do that, is this is, as I understand it, a relatively new area for them. They have a small number of cities in the state that have such a program, they aspire to have more. And as I understand, the gentleman from Curbside, when he talked to the board, he said that if the number is too much below the level that we all expect, i.e. 5%, that it may be the case that they are not going to be able to offer this service in other cities, because obviously, other cities are going to look at us and look at SBWMA and say, how is this working for you? Would you recommend that in, let's say, the East Bay or the North Bay, that we do an RFP and hire Curbside? So they said, basically what they were saying, and Curbside folks, is it's in our interest, i.e. Curbside, for this to be successful, because otherwise, other cities won't join in and also sign up for this.
I see that, I see the logic there. Because if it's successful, then other people will sign up and their business will increase. And if nobody does it, if nobody sends in their things, everybody will go, well, what's the point of this? And they don't have this business.
Right. And I should also mention, too, through the chair, that right now, the alternative to having a service like this is you have to take your materials to Tower Road. They're not accepted at Shoreway in San Carlos.
Understand, no, I understand.
Well, I have a question, Ms. Moore, about that. So if I'm your average resident and I order a kit bag, put all my stuff in it, when does Curbside show up? How long does it take for them to come?
My understanding is you call them, and I believe it's 24 hours, they will come and pick up.
Okay. Any questions? I don't have any. Okay. Anybody from public like to speak on this? Don't have any speaker cards? No? Yes, so, come on up. That's fine, we know who you are.
Pat Potter, San Carlos Green. I'm an electronics recycler by profession, and I like the idea of Curbside. The two problems I have is a liability issue, because if the city doesn't have control on where the electronics goes, does that liability fall on the city? And the second one is, it's my understanding with Curbside, from people I've talked to about the company, is it's presented to the community as, call when you want this to be picked up, but it won't be picked up until there are other people in your neighborhood that want it picked up. So you may be sitting around for quite a while, waiting for it to be picked up. But the issue I'm really concerned about is liability.
Okay, great.
Because it's hazardous waste.
Mr. Moore, can you, or Mr. Rubens, can you address those questions?
I'm sure that'll be, it's handled in the agreement that will ultimately be entered into, but the theory, the city doesn't have any liability because, but at the time, the materials are left out, it's the, until they're picked up, they're owned by the resident, and then when they're, once they're picked up, they're not in our possession anymore, they're owned by, or possessed by the company. So the city does not have any possession of it, and the control of the materials flows from the customer or the resident directly to the, to the vendor. So we would also have indemnity, of course, in any agreement, in case there was anybody who had named the city under some set of facts that we don't anticipate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Through the chair, I want...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to push on that for just a moment, because I'm familiar with several dumpster diving cases where people would say, hey, it's in the dumpster, that's public domain. So...
Well, in this case, we don't own, the city doesn't own the dumpster, it's, it's this container, it's not our container, it's, the property in the container is completely under the control of the resident. You mean, you're talking about like a trash bin at a public park or something like that, where people are going in there? And if, the way you would attach liability for a city would, you'd have to show it was a dangerous condition that we had caused or contributed to.
Yeah, let me also comment through the chair. First of all, the agreement between Curbside is not with the city, it's with the SBWMA, so that relationship is not there with the city. Second of all, to comment on the dumpster diving question from Councilmember Ahmad, I should mention also that in our research on moving from our current multi-stream to single-stream recycling, we've been told by agencies in the East Bay that we're going to see a significant drop-off in that problem once we go to single-stream, because all the recyclables will be mixed together at the residency, and therefore, and it's separated, obviously, at the plant at Shoreway. And so what will likely happen, based on what other cities have seen, is these folks will move on to other communities where it's still multi-stream, because it won't be as easy to get all the cans, for example, all the cardboard, because they won't be all together like they are today.
Just, let me just follow up on the thought, I mean, we have to make sure that the collection devices are safe. I mean, sure, there are hazardous substances in there. I haven't seen the collection, Brian, I don't know if it's, if it's something that you have to insert them and then it gets locked or something like that, but I think the way, the main way the city gets protected is we have, in the agreement, provisions that protect us from any potential claim of liability. But I still think that we don't ever own the materials. They're owned by the resident before they get picked up, and then they're owned by the company after they're picked up.
So then the issue is that, that the city council is going to vote to require us to pay for this service that puts the citizens liable if they put it out on their curb? I know in Santa Rosa, there's an issue where citizens will put their e, I'm only talking about electronic waste, but when they put their electronic waste, they get gangs coming through the town, picking that electronic waste up, because there is a fee that's, that is paid for computer monitors and televisions by the state. So the same issue comes up with bottles and cans, when you have people come through and scavenge when you put it out, but electronic waste is a little bit more dangerous as far as mishandling it. And I certainly think if you're going to pass that, that you need to let the citizens know that, and if anything happens to that e-waste, once you put it out on the curb, it's your responsibility, it's your liability, because there's a lot of concern with the citizens after 60 Minutes came out with their report about e-waste getting exported and the harm, the toxins that are in electronic waste. And if the citizens are going to be responsible for it, once it goes out, to be picked up by a service that we've been required to pay for, then that might be an issue. At least you ought to, at least it ought to be made aware. I didn't realize that the answer would be that I own that, once I've put it out there.
I guess I should clarify, too, that the e-waste disposal through Curbside is very much like our current e-waste vendors, they are required to document that it isn't shipped overseas. That language, the same language that's in the e-waste collection events is in this contract.
The scavenger issue still remains.
And this, our municipal code identifies that as illegal conduct, and it may be, I, we don't think it's, it's, it is an issue, obviously, it does happen, and it's part of the administration of the program to deal with those issues, so...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Potter, thank you. Okay.
I have one more question, quick question. You know, you indicated, and I go, I'm not just, again, trying to put you on the spot here, but you indicated 24 hours. Ms. Potter, who's in this business, says, and I certainly, my intuitiveness says, she's right, you're not, they're going to, they're not going to come to 961 Crestview Drive if I'm the only guy calling at 18,000 houses.
Well, I will...
Unless they get somebody else in town. I mean, that's just, doesn't seem good business to me.
Well, again, I will check, double-check with the SBWMA, but when the program was presented to us, that's how it was presented to us, that...
So they're going to, what do they come, 10 times a day? I mean, in other words, I call at 5:00 in the morning, he calls at 7:00 in the morning, I guess they just come once, you know, and I guess they go by day by day by day, I assume.
My understanding is the way the program works, the way it was explained to us, is when a customer has e-waste, hazardous waste, whatever, they call the company and the company delivers a container.
Uh huh.
And again, I haven't seen these containers.
Sure, sure.
I don't know the type of container. They deliver an appropriate container, whether it's a fluorescent bulb, a CFL, it's e-waste, whatever it is. So presumably, the containers are different. And then once the resident puts the material in the container, they then call the company and say, the material's now in the container, it's on my porch, pick it up.
Okay.
And we're told that the pickup happens in an expedited fashion, I believe it was a 24-hour turnout, again, I'll confirm that, what, there are, there are performance standards in the contract. It is not the case, I'm, I can tell you right off, right now, that as far as how long it is, it says you must pick it up by X, but I will confirm...
What about delivering the kit?
My, my recollection is that also has a performance standard, but again, rather than, since I don't have the agreement...
No, I know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but to me, I mean, it's, it sounds, it sounds like a wonderful thing, just pick it up and magic happens, but I just, I can't fathom it, maybe because I'm looking at the business model, I just, I don't, again...
I think the cities that we talk to that have the program do feel that it is magic to use...
Okay.
We will get you more information.
I can be wrong for the first time in 2010, that could happen, so...
Also, I'd like to comment that by not having a pickup service, you have to realize there's also a risk. I mean, this is pesticides, this is scary hazardous type of materials, this is something as simple as a burnt-out fluorescent light bulb. When someone in a household has one of these fluorescent light bulbs, they have one of them, you know, what are they going to do with it? They sit on it, they think, I got to recycle it, after two weeks, you know, it ends up in the garbage can, a lot of times. And so I think the risks are far greater, and I think that it's the value of the program. Sure, there are risks, it goes out on the curb, there are people that could pick up the electronic stuff, but a far greater risk is if you don't make it easy and convenient for our citizens to get rid of this hazardous type of stuff, you'll end up with a good percentage of it in, in our dump, and in the landfill, and all that sort of stuff. So there's always going to be risk, but I think the, there's much greater risk when you don't have a program.
One more, through the chair, one more question and I'll shut up. I apologize for just seemingly, this just got me going. Are we going to get another bite of this apple, of this contract, or is this, if we say we're going with this, then the SBWMA is going to be the final arbiter on this, or what?
Clarify for me, what you mean by a bite of the apple?
The contract to approve, a contract we have not seen, the details we do not know, are we going to get a chance to vote on this again, or is it the SBWMA that's going to vote on it?
The SBWMA has done an RFP process and selected the contractors, so I guess the answer is, if we go through the SBWMA for this service, that may be the contractor contractor we use. I suppose, in theory, we could always do our own RFP—
No, I'm not, I'm not asking that, I'm just asking, we're never gonna get this, this council will never see that contract.
We can certainly show you the contract that SBWMA negotiated with this vendor, if that's what you're asking.
But SBWMA is gonna be the one voting on it.
They already did vote to use this vendor.
Already did vote, and they've seen a contract.
Yes.
Okay, they've seen it, at least somebody's seen something, okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Moore, thank you very much. Good job addressing all those questions. Any other comments or questions?
Comments, yeah.
Please.
Ask staff all the questions I think we care to ask, but comments—
Mr. Grocott, please.
We still have, we still have public comment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Black.
Okay.
He raised his hand after, Pat Potter.
You've been so patient, Mr. Black, come on up here. And we have, yeah, no, no, actually, I don't have a speaker card of Mr. Black.
No, I didn't, turn one in. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm Bob Black. My comment isn't as earth-shaking as the previous one, but my allied waste guy teases me about my garbage, that usually I have one, two, or maybe three bags in my garbage can, and I'd like to have a smaller can and a lower rate, if possible. I figure that costs me about, between $2 and $4 a pound to throw away my garbage, because, you know, like last week, I had one half-pound bag, and it seems like I should be able to have a smaller can and a lower rate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to speak on this topic? Okay, Mr. Grocott?
So looking at these rate increases, one of the reasons I asked Mr. Moore about the percentage is because I know this is, what we're talking about is Prop 218 hearing. And that's a nice idea and concept, that you say, okay, we're gonna put this out there, and we're gonna have a hearing, and if, you know, we get 50% or more people come in and protest, then it fails. But in reality, to get 50% of the people excited about anything, even a council race, is difficult. So it's a nice idea to, you know, hand it over to the people and say, you know, you make the final decision. So therefore, I think it's incumbent upon us, if we care to, as representatives of the fine people of San Carlos, to push back, if we are so inclined. And I think, you know, that speaks to what Mr. Black just talked about, you know, he pays so much for garbage. And I, you know, I've been on council long enough and looking at these rates long enough, I think I can remember back when a 32-gallon garbage bin was about $15. We're looking at, all told, about a 10% increase or more here, depending on what we do with this. And it's, and the reason it was at $15, you know, not too long ago, and it's where it is now, is because these percentages are percentages upon percentages upon percentages every year. Last year, I think we just increased it by, you know, the little food waste bin. So I would, I'm inclined to, as a matter of discussion, to ask our, us as a council, let's look at this a little bit more critically, maybe push back on it, push back on perhaps the, what we can, which would be the franchise fee, maybe we don't do what we said we wanted staff to look at a while back. And the curbside, while it, you know, it sounds like a good idea, perhaps, I think there's a lot more value, actually, in having, you know, a couple of San Carlos cleanup days, like we've done before, where people bring this stuff to a central location, we advertise it, they show up with their e-waste, and, you know, now in the past, we've just done it, I think, with e-waste. Perhaps we expand it to include everything that's on this list, whether it's sharps or, you know, fluorescent light bulbs, which are, of course, more popular now, because everyone's converted, we've encouraged so many people to use those, as opposed to an incandescent light bulb. Certainly paint cans and so forth. I remember your comments at the chamber, when you went over this, and you talked about, you know, scary stuff, like you said, tonight, paints and things like that. But those, if you have a program that goes on, you know, maybe twice a year, where you do a San Carlos cleanup day, it's not too much to hold on to a couple of paint cans in the garage, or wherever you keep that kind of stuff. If people know you're gonna have those kind of things going on, and they can get rid of it, and also, if they just know, you know, a little advertising once in a while, I was surprised the other day, I was out at Tower Road, and I saw that sign that says, you know, hey, this is where you can bring these kinds of things and drop them off. Well, now that I know that, next time I have a car battery, I know where to go with it. You know, if I can't take it out to the yard out here on, you know, near town, I can go out on, trying to think of the names of the roads here, not coming to mind.
Tower Road.
Tower Road, yeah, exactly. So off of Pohemus, you know, I can drive out there with these things. So I would be more inclined to do a program like that than curbside. Plus, I, just philosophically, I don't, it's hard for me to believe in a program where everybody pays, but only 5% use it, and they get the benefit of that, because everyone else is paying. Philosophically, I have trouble with that. I'd rather, if we're gonna do that, I'd rather make it available, but when you call them, you pay whatever the going rate is to have that service.
Mr. Cassella?
No, I, like I said, I have some difficulty with the, like I said, I'm all of faith in the world of Mr. Moore and SBWMA, I think they've done a good job over the years in trying to figure this out, and I think it's an admirable program. I think unfortunately, we're talking very small dollars here relative to the rest of the rates. I think, I think the biggest thing we have to do, if we're gonna raise these rates, is we have to get the word out to folks that they don't have to have a 32-gallon can. My neighbors across the street have a 20-gallon can, if they even have 20, I'm not even sure it's that big. They have no garbage. I don't know what they do with it, but they don't have any garbage. And they recycle a bunch, I recycle probably three-quarters of what we have, and the only reason we have a bigger can is because sometimes we have folks that, we have some events or something in our house, or parties, and we, otherwise, then we get charged, you know, extra amounts. But if you don't, I think the biggest thing is the education here, to go from like a 32 to a 20, is, under the proposed rates, is $7 a month. That's substantial, that's like over 30%. And I think that's what, we don't do a good job of telling folk, because, I mean, myself, you just have a garbage can, and I think that's the problem that we have, relative to letting people know what to do. So I'm probably inclined to vote for the first part of this, I'm not sure I'm so enthused about the hazardous waste thing, relative to the fact that I just, I'm thinking 5%, and I'm thinking 10%, 18%, 900 houses, I guess there's a lot of e-waste out there. I guess, again, I'm from the last century, as I tell people, so perhaps I'm behind the curve on this one, but that one's a tougher one for me.
Gentlemen?
I'll start. I have my issues with the hazardous waste, mainly just because I don't want to see people with hazardous waste buckets, or whatever these containers look with, in the front of their house for three days, or four days, or when, you know, if it's a printer or what it's not. And as someone from this generation, I have a lot of e-waste. I, you know, we go through iPods, we go through everything else, and, you know, e-waste stacks up. So, you know, that's my only issue with the hazardous waste, is just that, is it, is it really gonna be 24 hours? Because if it's not, then I think that becomes an issue, and it becomes an eyesore in certain neighborhoods. But I'm, as much as I don't want to see rates go up, I understand that things get more expensive, so rates have to go up, there has to be some money to pay for this stuff. So I'm okay with number one, and I'd be leaning towards number two, if I felt that it was actually gonna happen in that amount of time, and as we haven't seen a contract or anything else. I, and no disrespect at all, Mr. Moore, I just have your word, and that's it, but nothing from the actual company is saying what their timeline is.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of the hazardous waste program. It takes care of, you know, beyond just the e-waste, which, yes, I have a good chunk of that, it also takes care of the medical sharps and the other toxics that we have. There do seem to be some reasonable concerns. I would be happy to support a motion to continue this item to the next meeting, so that we could have these questions answered. I would sort of direct through the chair, if a continuance of two weeks, to get some of these points answered about rates, and pick up schedules, if they could be asked, if that really throws off our 218 schedule, because I'd like to support the hazardous
Mr. Moore, just as we continue on here, so there's a question here, is there any issue of basically continuing the hazardous waste program till our next meeting? Just get a little more clarification on the contract, the details, the 24-hour pickup and so forth, giving us a little bit more comfort level of what the program is.
You certainly can. I mean, the only drawback, as far as moving the item out, is that the later that you have the hearing, is the later we can raise the rates, and hence, the retroactive component will be larger. That's the only downside I can see. But certainly, from the staff perspective, we'd be happy to bring this back to you with additional information. I hear the council is interested in more details, and particularly interested in seeing the contract with the vendor, and we can certainly get all of that for you by the next meeting.
I can ask one quick question. The SBWMA, there's 12 members, I believe, right?
I believe so.
Okay, so if nine of them want to do it and three don't, how is that gonna work?
Basically, what happens is they budgeted, I believe it was enough money for free marketing for seven cities, and we were among the first that raised our hands, so we get free marketing. Frankly, there are some cities that didn't raise their hand early, that are hoping some of the first seven, like us, do drop out, so they can pick up our—
But I guess relative to the contract, is this gonna be a contract between, you know, in other words, the SBWMA usually makes a contract for all the cities?
It's open to, it's open to all of the cities, but much as some of the other optional programs, like the food scraps, for example, it's a sort of à la carte, you can opt in, opt out.
Okay, so it's an à la carte, this is an à la carte item?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And my thoughts, I've actually changed my opinion here a little bit. I was coming into this thinking very much of the hazardous waste pickup program. I think Mr. Grocott made some good comments, doing it the old-fashioned way, drop-off, and kind of the 5% participation, where 100% of the people are paying. I also think there's some clarification. I'd like to spend, go, come back with Mr. Ahmad's recommendation, kind of look again at the hazardous waste, and get a little bit more specific on the program, iron out some of the questions that we have before I would approve it. I'm pretty much on the fence right now on the hazardous waste, right now.
Do we need a formal motion to continue?
So I think we could proceed with a motion on approving the first part of the weight rate increase, or what do we do?
We're gonna continue.
Well, I guess the question procedurally is, we could go ahead and have the hearing on March 22nd on the first two components, with the understanding that if you wanted to do this, the hazardous waste program later, we would have a second rate increase hearing later. That's another option.
I think you should have, personally, I think it should be one hearing—
Yeah.
—for everything. So, I mean, that's just my opinion.
I think you'd have two options. One is you could advertise at the higher rate and do it now, and then you could lower the fee that you would actually charge, if you decided to pull the household hazardous waste out of the project. Otherwise, you could simply continue this item, we'll bring it back in two weeks, and it will, as Brian indicated, potentially, even though we're looking at the dates right now, it might be able to fit within our timeframes, but at the worst case, it simply means that, like last year, we would have a little bit more of a charge in arrears than what we would have anticipated. And it sounds like that's what the council would like, you want more information, let's bring it back in two weeks, and we'll clarify all of this.
I think so. Yep, okay, so continued? We don't need to approve that? It's continued?
You've announced it.
And thank you for some of the thoughts out there from the public on this. Okay, moving on to 10C.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Let me just address the topic here, this is looking at alternatives for use of proceeds for the potential sale of the city-owned property at Holly and Industrial. Mr. Sewicki?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Mark Sewicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager, here to present for your consideration some alternatives and the recommendation for the use of proceeds from the potential sale of the city-owned property at the northeast corner of Holly Street and Industrial Road. As you know, the city has marketed this property for several years, and recently entered into an agreement with In-N-Out Burgers to purchase and develop the site at a purchase price of $1.6 million. If the transaction is completed, the city expects to receive proceeds of approximately $1.5 million after sales costs. At a council meeting last November, Mayor Royce requested council to discuss guidelines regarding the allowable use of the sale proceeds, criteria for the potential purchase of new property, instructions for staff to proceed on replacing the ownership of the Holly Industrial property with a similar like-kind property, and an accounting of the flow of funds from the transaction. In considering options, it should be noted that, according to the city's adopted financial policies and past practice, one-time revenue sources should not be used to fund ongoing expenditures, although that remains an option that's available to you. More appropriate options might be allocating to the economic uncertainties reserves within the general fund, allocating to the equipment replacement fund, which is Fund 10, allocating to the capital fund, Fund 25, funding strategic property acquisition by the city via the general fund, or lending the proceeds to the redevelopment agency for strategic property acquisition by the agency, and this is the option that staff recommends. Lending the funds to the RDA would allow the agency to leverage its other resources to strategically reinvest in property or projects with the potential to further increase property tax, sales tax, and/or hotel tax revenue. In particular, there may be opportunities associated with the Wheeler Plaza site, or the Landmark Hotel site, for property acquisitions that could improve those projects, those sites for development. Consideration of acquiring particular properties would be made by the agency board, which is yourselves, as opportunities arise. While the agency assesses opportunities over time, it would be paying interest to the city's general fund, yielding a steady long-term income stream, similar to a receipt of ground lease payments, that the city might otherwise have received if it had retained ownership of the Holly and Industrial property and leased it, or acquired another property and leased that. If the council concerns, concurs, we recommend that you direct staff to research similar inter-agency loans in other jurisdictions for the, for appropriate terms, and contingent upon a potential sale, staff would prepare loan documents for council and agency approval. Available for your questions.
Questions?
So I have a question. If the money, if we took option six, which is the staff recommendation, but council was interested in parkland acquisition, and wanted to keep that, as you might say, on the back burner, but then something came up where we actually could acquire some parkland, and everyone knows, we're way under on what we should have for parkland, given our population. There's data out there that supports that statement, and there's also, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? There are recommendations by the state and so forth, that if you're a city of X size, certain population, you should have this amount of parkland, and we don't have that, we're not anywhere close to it. So my question is, if we were to do number six, and then the opportunity came up for acquiring land that could be converted to park, or used as park, or open space that's already existing, et cetera, could we pull that money back out of the RDA and use it for this other, this other means? Or, once we put it into the RDA, does it sit there until the RDA uses it and acts on the loan? And then the follow, one more question is, it's put in here as a lend to the RDA, does that imply, then, that the RDA would pay back, not only be giving us interest, as the report goes into, but what the report doesn't clarify for me, is that they actually pay back the capital at some point to, I guess, the general fund?
I was actually suggesting an advertising loan, over 10 years, say, so yes, the agency would pay back, the city, could be a longer term, you wouldn't want the term to be longer than the life of the agency, which right now is approximately another 20 years. It could be a demand loan, you could pay interest only until the city demands repayment. But yes, at any time, the city could call the loan and demand repayment. The only risk would be that the agency expended all of its funds and is waiting for additional tax increment to come in, in order to repay that loan. But the tax increment, the annual tax increment is fairly large, that it would be able to do that within six months, 12 months.
And then I have one more question, and Mr. Rubens, shut me down if you need to. If the money is in the RDA, how do I want to ask this? Let's say the RDA got sued for some unknown reason, would this money then, as a loan, be at risk sitting over in the RDA? Tried to ask it carefully enough.
Well, the, the way we, I would think we'd want to structure that, is that this loan is more in the secured category type of loan, so that we have a priority over any potential creditors. But it's a loan that would still be owed to the city, and we're certainly, we want to structure it so it's ahead of, again, ahead of any other potential creditors of the RDA. And I don't really want to get into the details of how we might structure it today, because of some other considerations. But I think we have, what you have before you tonight is not the actual documents. I mean, we need, we still need it drafted, and it's contingent on the actual close of escrow on the, on the In-N-Out Burger property. So I think you're being asked for some general guidance on what option and direction you want to pursue, because we have to generate those documents to protect the city in the event that's the option you want to choose on the loan. But we would do everything we could to protect the city from any potential creditors on this debt, so that we were number one, and could get repayment.
Through the chair.
I just wanted to add to Mr. Grocott's question. Mr. Rubens, I'm not so concerned about a lawsuit, as much as I have a state takeaway. Would that fall in the same category? Or are we just sort of at the mercy of Sacramento?
Well, I don't think we'd be at the mercy of Sacramento, because this would just be an obligation. The takeaways are, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but they, the takeaways are not attacking this kind of obligation, they're generally trying to reach a certain category of funds, and they're for education purposes. This would be a debt that the agency has, separate and apart from any theoretical obligation. be a debt that the agency has, separate and apart from any theoretical obligation that would be owed to other agencies.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Can I, before we get other questions to staff, I'm the one who brought this topic up and asked it to put, put on agenda. I'd like to just give a little background. It may elicit some other questions from City Council. Of course, the, the background is a couple of years ago, we, we, we were set to do a 60-year land lease on this property. And one of the questions that I asked was, is this a piece of property that we would want to use in 60 years or long-term for the city? And the answer was, was, was no. It really didn't have any value for use for the city. Of course, we were interested in doing a land lease to get some revenue. We had an asset that had certain value, want return on assets. We wanted some rental income or, you know, earnings coming back. And so the idea was made, well, if we sell, and this, again, was my own idea at that point of time, but to do a like-kind exchange to buy another piece of property that already has a tenant, there's rental potential, but it does have the value of us owning a piece of property that may have some incremental value to the city, because it's, it's contiguous space with an existing site, or it could be a park, or it could be a, a recreation center, or it could be part of Wheeler, or some other type of thing. So that was kind of the change of mind. And why this is very interesting to me, I know other organizations, school districts in the past, like even our school district had a major piece of property up on La Mesa, Mesa Verde's, a big plot of land. They had a high school. They had property there. These properties get sold, and the proceeds from the sale, five, 10, 20 years later, just kind of disappear. So I wanted to make sure that we had a regimen and a policy that when we do actually sell, sell land. And I'll close by saying, actually, Mark and I, and, or the staff report and I are very much in agreement. I think it's a good report. I think some of the options he lists, one through six, I'm not in favor. One, one through four get into using it for operating reserves, or the capital fund, or equipment replacement. Those are all part of our operations. But, but I do think focusing, and again, his recommendation towards proper, property acquisition to the redevelopment, I'm kind of either looking at redevelopment or general city business, general fund, like a park. It doesn't have to be redevelopment, but it could be one or, or the other. That's, that's what, that is what drove us to this agenda item. So, so with that, I'll open it back up to questions from council.
I had one question. Assuming you amortized it over 10 years, and you indicated in your, in the staff report on page three, that it might ballpark out at 6%. Again, all this is possible. It would be $200,000 paid back by the redevelopment agency. Did I miss something here? What would happen to the $200,000 when it got back to us? Because that's really the crux of what Mayor Royce has brought up. I mean, it might go away for, for a minute, and then it, and then it gets paid back over 10 years. What happens, or if staff had thought about where, where that money would go when it came back to us, was repaid back to us?
That answer is, that question is answered by the council, I guess, what, what you would do with it. But my, my thinking there is that, within that 10-year period, the agency would have redeployed that money into a strategic opportunity which would be giving a return to the city, maybe of similar value in hotel tax, or property tax, or sales tax, so that there is actually a return on investment for that, for that money, in addition to the interest that the city is receiving. But yes, the city receives that, that funding back and could do with it whatever it wants.
Replenish its reserves. Right. It could go through one, one through six again, or here we go again, which is sort of goes.
And again, we could also make the terms longer, 15-year, 20-year.
I understand.
Balloon payment, so.
Oh, I appreciate that. I was just, I was trying to, I mean, we're, we're theoretically, there were six options, but in effect, if we pick the one recommended by staff, next year, and we get paid back the first amount of money, we're back to the same five options again. Is that correct? I mean, is that sort of what we're looking at here? That, that money comes into the general fund?
Correct.
And now it's the council's choice on whether, what it wants to do with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. This is a, this is a vehicle where the, where the general fund would get possible interest of $50,000, again, ballpark number, you throw numbers out, possible $50,000 a year from the redevelopment agency, which would basically, well, could go to general fund, it could go anywhere. But that other 150 that's being paid back in principal, 160 paid back in principal, again, is the same question that you brought up. What do we do with that $160,000? I just want to make sure we all understand that it, we, we, we could pick six, and then we, number six tonight, or identify that this might be a good idea, but then we also, there has to be a second vote, or a second idea of what we want to do with it when the money comes back. So we're in the, in the same situation, I think.
Well, I don't think that's really a question, but Councilman Grisilli, we could essentially also do an interest-only loan.
I'm sorry?
We could essentially do an interest-only loan, where we would get the lump sum back at the end.
Sure.
That way, we're not getting an incremental, unable to pick at it.
Oh, absolutely.
And, um, so yeah, all my other questions were asked by everyone else, so I don't have anything.
Same thing, I think, everybody else is.
Okay. I do have a speaker card. Jake Fernandall, you're welcome to speak on this item.
I might get mad at me, because I'm not going to talk about spending the money.
We'd never get mad at you.
So my name is Jake Fernandall. I live at 941 Holly Street. For our new member here, you may not know me. I live 300 feet from the proposed site. And, you know, it might be just a procedural thing. I understand city things that I don't understand, that you're spending the money already, but to me, it looks like it's a done deal, right? So it, it's hard to imagine it not happening, when you're talking about spending the money. And I just wanted to maybe get the facts straight, right? So you guys, the city gets 1.5 million, which is great, and my hypothesis is that I lose 10,000, 20,000 bucks in property value, right? So I guess I have two questions. A, if my hypothesis is right, like, what can be done about it? Do I just take it? Do I throw myself at the mercy of staff again? Which, by the way, you don't pay Robert quite enough. He's great. So, as an aside. Yeah, he saved me last time. So anyways, you know, if my hypothesis is wrong, or, or, I guess I'm, I have a hard time understanding how that can happen, how, like, it's okay that I just lose that amount of money. Or, maybe I'm just wrong. So, like, do you guys believe that? Do you guys believe that I'm going to lose a bunch of money, or is it, or do you, do you not? And I guess that's, that's kind of my question.
Okay. So, again, your public comment isn't, I don't believe, related to the agenda item. We're, we're basically just talking about some options on sale proceeds of capital assets for the city. As far as the situation and the, the situation with the contract, you go back to prior agenda items where it was approved to go ahead and proceed. The contract is still not final, but those questions we can't answer. That's not on the agenda right now. We're not talking about In-N-Out Burger.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through the chair. May we start discussion?
Sure.
Yeah. My inclination for something like this, and, and with due respect to the gentleman who just spoke, I appreciate what he said. I look at this, however, as, just as a general policy of if we're going to sell land, which we don't do very often. Normally, we keep it. We either try to do a land lease or something, so we have income, but very rarely does the city sell land. And so, back to your point, Mr. Royce, when you, you gave a little history on this, what we're really looking at is, when we sell land, what's our policy going to be with the use, use of the proceeds? And looking at it that way, I would like to see a policy of five and six coupled together, and completely coupled together. So to Mr. Grisilli's point about, well, what do you do with the interest that you earn on that money? You plow it back into either Item 5 or another opportunity for Item 6. You do not let these funds go outside of property acquisition. And the only other comment that I would add is, I, I would reiterate what I said about parks. We are way behind. I think it's an area we need to, where we can, take opportunity. And those don't come along very often either. And the only thing I would add to it is, it's been said by the Eastside people and their, their representation with the Greater Eastside Neighborhood Association, and I think rightfully so. They, they take some brunt of development in this town, more than other parts of the town. And so I think, given that that is the case, if we could look for opportunity, I wouldn't tie our hands to it, with it, but if we could find opportunity to improve upon some feature on the Eastside, be it a park or something else, we also should, should keep that in mind for the use of these funds.
Here we'll switch down to the other side. Mr. Chikline?
I completely, completely agree with Councilman Grokot. You know, I don't want to see this money go to waste. I don't want to see it get spent in, you know, just in the general fund. So I, I agree with coupling five and six. I was not fully sold on six until the councilman asked the question about the parks, because I don't want to see us hold our hands to just using it for development. It would be nice to maybe purchase another parcel for a park, or, you know, have that as an option, especially with the Eastside, because this isn't, In-N-Out's not the only thing going over there. There's a possible trans-village and all these other developments that are really based on, in that one area. So I think we have to, you know, understand and not tie our hands to it, but take into account that we may want to give them some more amenities based on they are going to get more population and more traffic now. So I, yeah, I completely agree with the councilman.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll, yeah, put it down on the record. I agree with Mr. Grokot. Five and six makes sense, and I, I like the fact that both five and six use the term strategic. That is something that is determined from the, from the council, what is strategic at the time. I, I'd like to think that, from time to time, the council will be able to figure out what is, what is appropriate. The other thing is that, to Mr. Grokot's point, the RDA does encompass the Greater East San Carlos side. So, to some extent, you have two agencies looking for doing strategic investments, and they do surround that area. So I think we're in agreement in that point.
I tend to agree with the other council members again, and I guess I'm going to get too technical. Again, like I asked Mr. Siewicki, the money physically comes back, okay? It comes back to us physically. It gets transferred from one account to another account. What account does it go into when it comes back to us?
Well, it will be decided upon at budget time.
Okay.
It'll be decided by the city council. And what I'm hearing is that there would be a desire to take at least a capital portion.
At least, if not the interest.
And dedicate it towards Number 5. But that would seem to suggest that the interest flow above and beyond the capital repayment might be available to the city for operational expenses.
It might, might be. But, but I guess my question is, what, where will it go in the general? Is it just a bookkeeping thing, that you keep it off to the side? This $150,000 just sets off, and it doesn't have to go to a special fund?
It, it, it could. It's your choice. We could put it in Fund 25 and reserve it for capital.
I just asked that, because if it, if it goes into the general fund, then it just goes in the general fund. That's where I'm, I'm, I'm being too accounting for you, and I apologize.
You're not.
But the, but the money is, is being transferred from one agency to another. If someone's writing a check, it's coming in. Where does it go? And so what, would we save Fund 25, or did we set up a new magical number fund for strategic property acquisition? And again, I don't mean to be, I apologize for putting you on the spot. Maybe we just put it in Fund 25.
You can do whatever you want to do with it, Councilmember Grisilli.
Okay, okay. All right, fine. So we can do whatever we want. The main, in other words, I just don't want it to get lost.
Right.
Because when it comes back, and if it goes into the general fund, it's in the general fund.
Right.
And so I'm, we can, we will just, I guess we'll, when it comes back, it was the first year, we'll decide how we want to allocate those funds.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Much for being kind.
Through the chair. I, I want to reiterate my comment, because, and I appreciate the other council members saying they, they agree, but something that the city manager just stated, it concerns me. I want to be sure that I was heard correctly. When I said couple five and six, what I meant was that we could either use it for five or six, but also, if we use it for six, the interest that we get paid back and the capital gets plowed right back into uses for either five or six. We don't even consider one, two, three, or four. We don't use it for any kind of operations, capital improvement, equipment purchase, anything. The interest we earn on that money goes into a fund for property, strategic property acquisition. That was my point.
Okay. I'm also very much in, in line with Mr. Grokot started off. I'm very much for basically five or six, which is a potential future capital acquisition to our general fund, or general operation of the city, or the RDA. I, I do think, in the comments that Mr. Grisilli started, I think it's very important to, to keep the interest earned on this million and a half as part of the asset. It's an asset that's really not gaining any value, but as it gains from a million and a half to a million six or a million seven, if it takes you three to four, five years to gather a piece of a property, just with inflation cost of living, that future piece of property, all of a sudden, is going to cost $2 million that you could have bought for a million and a half, five years prior. So I would like to keep those two pieces, both the earnings and the, the capital, the proceeds, together for future acquisition for a five or six. I also want to echo Mr. Grokot's comments to keep it very flexible, very broad. We talk about Eastside. We talk about a Quonset hut. It could be a soccer field. We talk about a contiguous piece of property somewhere between the Depot and L'Oriola Park. We, we have a facility, corporate yard, with some contiguous property. There's also a piece of property that I don't even know about that may be just a great deal. And, and why I bring that up is, oh, let me continue. Wheeler Plaza. There, there are definitely some opportunities and, and some bargains there. But the one point that hasn't been brought up is I do think we need to move quickly. As we get these proceeds, the market is down. There are some deals out there. And to just to put it into account and wait five years later, we're going to look back and that million and a half piece of property is going to be non-existent. They're going to be $3 million or, or $4 million. But I'm not committed. I really do like the flexibility. I like it, keeping it in a separate fund, and let's, let's see where the best deal is. If it's for city operations, if it's for park, if it just could be a future great buy that we could eventually use for something else, if it could be for Wheeler redevelopment or housing, whatever the best deal is, let's, let's move and, and, and act on it soon, I think, while there are opportunities, because I think the best opportunities are now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate, to.
Sure. I'm actually finished.
Okay. To direct staff to prepare the documents, in other words, Option 6, to prepare documents to lend the sales proceeds to the redevelopment agency for uses in strategic property acquisition opportunities for economic development. And by the way, just as an aside, I withhold my, I, I agree in, in principle with most of what was said, but as Mr. Weiss said, when the money comes back, we will have the choice of what we want to do with it. I'm not locking myself in today to interest, I, I know your point, and I'm, I'm not, but I'm not necessarily locking in the interest part of it to go directly back into this account. So, just, just to let everyone know where I stand on this. But I do agree with 95% of what you said. So, anyway, I make the motion.
So can I ask a question about your motion? I mean, questioning why we need to even move it anywhere. I, I thought the discussion, I thought Mr. Grokot's point was just put it in an account. Why redevelopment? Did I miss something there?
Well, I would assume, and then maybe I'm wrong, depending on the documents, that there might be, maybe missed, and again, we haven't looked at the numbers, would there be an advantage to get more money from a lending situation than it would from just general fund income?
There's, there's two reasons why we recommend Option 6. And the first is that the agency has other dollars that it can deploy. So if there was a property that was $2 million, $2.5 million, you can couple the $1.5 million with those other funds, purchase a property. The second reason is, you're creating a payment stream to the general fund. We have a budget deficit. It's, if we had lent this, if we had a, a ground lease payment coming to the city, we would be able to use those funds. We have other ground lease payments that the city receives that it uses to, to, to fund operations. So that was part of the idea. I understand if we turn this into an interest-only loan, you would have those interest payments available.
It's the option the city council could.
Come back later.
So, so my question is, I know there are some early thoughts on some risk takeaways of going, State of California going after funds and so forth. If it got to where there was a, a deal that the redevelopment agency wanted to make, wouldn't it merely take just a council meeting for us to approve moving money at the next meeting? It's basically moving it from our left pocket to our right pocket, and we could do that immediately?
Correct.
So why does it have to be in the redevelopment? That's.
Only the advantage of, of.
Strengthening the redevelopment agency.
Redevelopment agency, so
Redevelopment agency has more money now.
Okay. But is a risk there, that's what.
And to answer the other part of the original question, the agency could charge an interest rate that is a point or two above what the city may be getting on other funds.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'm not sure where you're going to take the idea of a motion in a second, number one. Number two, if we are going to go in that direction and direct staff to draft up the documents, the question about putting it at risk in the case of what Mr. Ahmad talked about, the state takeaways, and what I brought up about being sued, the RDA being sued, and I'm trying to be very careful here, Mr. Rubens, I think you know why. I would like some research and some comment back to the council. Perhaps it would necessarily be in closed session. And I would like that before we, I don't mind directing staff to draw up the papers and that sort of thing.
Right.
And if that's the motion, that's fine.
That's the motion.
But I think there's some other work, some other homework that we need to have done, and perhaps we even need to meet in a closed session on some of this. And then the last comment that I would add is, I have not, I came to this meeting with some properties in mind that we could acquire, that we could look into acquiring, and I have not stated which ones, because it's not a good idea to do that. Because if, you know, that's the kind of thing we do in closed session. We don't tip our hand on property acquisition from the dais. So, and the reason I state that, though, is I would like to be able to pass those on to staff, and perhaps we even meet in closed session on those, too, and begin talking about some ideas of places we might immediately look at buying property and not even do the thing with the RDA. I think we've got some things here that may need discussion.
Agree, yeah.
And it can all be done from the dais.
Anyway, my motion, which hasn't had a second yet, is just to
I'll give it a second.
Draw up the papers. So it's been
So, I'm sorry, would you restate the motion?
Surely. I'm directing staff to prepare documents to lend the sales proceeds to the redevelopment agency for use in strategic property acquisition opportunities for economic development.
A second.
Well, actually, Mr. Grokoty seconded, so.
Oh, you did?
Sorry.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
Any other discussion? Okay, Grokoty?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokoty?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
So, Mr. Royce, just one more question then on the item. How do you want us as council members, as individuals, if we have some ideas, how do you want us to proceed on that? We give that to staff and
Yeah, Mark, how would you like us to proceed to provide ideas, properties, provide them to you or to Mark or
You could provide that information to
Meeting?
You could provide that information to my office, that would be fine. I mean, I guess, you know, the RDA approach would be for economic development purposes. I've heard a lot of discussion about acquiring parklands. So when you provide the information, maybe giving us some ideas to what you're thinking in terms of how the land might be used would be appropriate as well. At that point, it would be at staff's discretion to bring, to evaluate the parcels that have been brought to our attention, and if appropriate, designate closed session discussion on the feasibility of that acquisition. I will say that, you know, I think all of us can recognize the desire for additional parkland and the like, but we're going to have a very tough time maintaining the parklands that we have with our current operational revenue stream. And so acquiring additional land and drawing down upon reserves that we may or may not even have in our possession yet is, I think, a chancey proposition.
Okay, great. Mark?
Thank you very much. And our last agenda item is study session 11A. I have two speaker cards in front of me, and this is proposed study session on proposed modifications to chapter 18.200B, low-market-rate housing program known as the BMR ordinance.
Good evening, Mark. Sewicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager, presenting for your review and discussion the proposed modifications of the below-market-rate inclusionary housing ordinance. Okay. In March 2009, based on a recommendation from EDAC, council directed staff to form an ad hoc advisory housing task force to conduct a detailed review of the existing ordinance and proposed modifications as necessary. EDAC selected six community members and stakeholders to join three EDAC members on the task force. The task force included representation from different neighborhoods, developers, brokers, and architects, environmental concerns, and advocates of affordable housing. The task force held seven meetings over seven months, provided staff with valuable feedback and direction, first in preparation of the RDA's 10-year housing compliance plan, and then on BMR policies and modifications. I'd like to thank the task force members for their time and perseverance. They put in a lot of work, and as you can tell from your staff report, it's a very complex subject matter. I'd also like to introduce and thank our consultants, Jim Drawn and John Leonard from RSG, and our Affordable Housing Council, Barbara Kautz and Josh Mukapade from Goldfarb and Littman. They are available here tonight for questions regarding the economics of housing and the regulatory framework with which we need to comply. They can also provide their insights and experience with these matters, including those with other communities. Okay, I'm PowerPoint challenged tonight. The objectives of the task force and staff were to examine how this tool of inclusionary housing can better meet our affordable housing goals, ensure compliance and consistency with other laws and programs, and provide flexibility in response to the market and programs in neighboring cities. As mentioned in the staff report, issues, policies, and statutory requirements regarding affordable housing are complex and numerous. I'll take a few minutes here to provide some background, defining what we mean by affordable housing, describing the context of housing in San Carlos and the existing ordinance before walking you through each of the proposed modifications. We can wait until I have run through all the slides for a Q and A, or we could pause after I describe each of the issues and recommendations in each major area of modification. In either case, please interrupt me at any point if you have a question of clarification or understanding. We're going to begin with a brief primer on affordable housing policy. Affordable housing is provided at an affordable cost, typically defined as 30% to 35% of qualifying income limits in these defined categories, low, very low, and moderate, adjusted for household size. The moderate threshold is 120% of area median income or less. Low is an amount set by HUD and HCD that is typically between 70% and 95% of AMI, and very low is centered around 50% to 60% of AMI. There's also a category for extremely low. Who qualifies for affordable housing? This is, slide I think is perhaps a little more illustrative of who benefits from affordable housing programs. Many of the folks we rely on for key jobs in the community cannot afford a median-priced home or rental in San Carlos. This includes several step-one salaries of city employees, particularly if there is only one earner and they have children. Even two-earner families may still qualify. So while average income in San Carlos exceeds $140,000, we have 49% of households in San Carlos earning less than $100,000 and 36% earning less than $75,000. These are the income limits as translated into affordable costs for a monthly rental. The mod limits are actually above market rent at this time. On the ownership side, we can translate those into affordable costs. This is after factoring in a mortgage and HOA dues and other costs of ownership. These charts illustrate the comparison of affordable unit prices versus median prices in the marketplace. Although market price, sale prices have fallen recently, they still remain out of reach, compounded by the difficulty of obtaining financing. Market rental rates have been relatively steady, but the availability of apartments remains very tight. This slide shows the affordability gap per unit on rental projects on the left and ownership or condominium projects on the right. In other words, this is the difference between the median sale value and the affordable price, or the capitalized value of the rental stream with regards to rental apartments. A developer would consider this, the gap as their subsidy under the BMR ordinance, or the additional cost that must be spread among the market units in the project. Notably, the gaps are much greater on the condominium side, especially under current circumstances in San Carlos where market rents are and where market prices are. Under housing element law, every city is assigned a regional housing needs assessment. The state apportions this need to regions, and then within the county, we receive the share of 599 units over a five-year period. This is a planning obligation, not a production obligation. In other words, we must show a good faith effort that we can allow these units to be produced. However, it does provide a reasonable, objective determination of our housing needs, and therefore a target to consider achieving. We get credit for what we've built to date since January 2007 and what is in the pipeline. The Transit Village proposal of 281 units is one large pipeline project that could reduce our remaining goal. If it is not built, we would have to demonstrate to HCD that our needs can be met by substituting some other project or projects or sites. It leaves us with a remaining commitment of, a remaining target of 285 affordable units. As you can see, we've met our need for the above moderate. What we still need to produce are the moderate, low, and very low. This works out to about 57 units per year over five years. To put that in context, we've only produced 208 total housing units in the last planning period, an average of less than 30 units a year. That represents an expansion of less than 2% of the units in San Carlos, or 2% of our population over 10, over five to 10 years. Only 55 units were BMRs, less than eight per year. Total BMR units are less than 1% of our total housing stock. Reliance on the BMR ordinance alone to produce our remaining RENA goal of 285 BMR units would require us to produce 1,900 units of housing at 15% inclusionary. Based on our track record, one might claim that it is tough to build housing in San Carlos. Ask a developer, and they will tell you that the BMR ordinance is part of the problem. So let's review the existing ordinance so you have a basis to evaluate the modifications proposed. The ordinance requires 15% of units in buildings of seven units or more to include one median unit, and then the rest alternate between low and very low. The units remain restricted for the life of the project. Developers can propose to build units off-site at another location if they build 10% more than are required, and that they meet or exceed minimum quality standards. Fees are collected for fractional units. Fees may not be paid in lieu of providing the required number of BMR units. This provision is often allowed in other cities, particularly for smaller projects where the BMR burden may be relatively higher and create a, creates a disincentive to the assembly of parcels to produce seven units or more in smaller projects. If one is going to build a seven-unit project, they're better off building a six-unit project and not having to build that BMR unit because of the cost that it takes for them to do it. Getting back to the BMR ordinance, we need to examine how this tool can better meet our purposes, ensure compliance and consistency with other laws and programs, and provide flexibility in response to the market and programs in neighboring cities. This is a list of the modifications that are proposed. This is the order that they were provided in the staff report, the order with which I'll go through them now. The first area of change addressed in the staff report is the inconsistency of certain definitions between the existing ordinance and various state laws, including community redevelopment law, housing element law, and state density bonus law. This is a technical matter, but it may have significant economic implications. It also makes it difficult to quantify and align our goals and our results with state requirements. The impact of adopting consistent definitions, the very low and low BMR rents and prices will be lower. However, for moderate BMRs, the rents and prices will be higher. That's just a quirk of the definitions compared to the way we've addressed them. These changes in economics are further addressed under the income targeting modifications section. One of the major motivating factors in reopening the BMR ordinance for revision was to reach a policy decision on how we tackle addressing state density bonus law requirements, which were revised in 2005 and required the city to comply. We either need to adopt a state density bonus law ordinance, or we need to incorporate it somehow into our inclusionary ordinance. Under our existing ordinance, density bonuses, incentives, and concessions have been discretionary. Under the SDBL, I will use that as an abbreviation for state density bonus law, SDBL establishes thresholds where the city must provide them by right. The major policy question is whether the units required by the BMR ordinance should count towards the SDBL thresholds, or should they be mutually exclusive, i.e., they need to comply with our inclusionary ordinance before they can go after those state density bonuses, incentives, and concessions. Under the SDBL, developers can get up to 35%, up to 35% more units above our density limits by meeting or exceeding the minimum percentages of very low, low, or moderate units. They can get an automatic 20% bonus by providing, say, 5% very low units. Every 2.5% above that, they'll get another 1% bonus. I'm sorry, they'll get a 2.5% bonus for every 1% above 5%, all the way up to 35%. In addition, they're entitled to one incentive or concession of their choice once they pass the first threshold, and then a second or third incentive or concession of their choice as they move higher. This is a list of some of the incentives and concessions that the city can provide this list. The developer gets to pick what they want to put in their project. In addition, the developer must be granted a reduction in parking standards. So when the task force looked at this, they saw that we had three options to address the state density bonus law. Adopt a completely separate ordinance, which just picks up the state law language and adopts it as city law. The second would be to have the city's inclusionary BMR units and the SDBL units be mutually exclusive. So the developer must first comply with the 15% inclusionary, and then they can start moving towards those thresholds. That means that to get the state density, say, the very low, they would need to be producing 20% very low before they would start to get the bonuses. The third option is to allow the city BMR units to count towards the SDBL thresholds. If that were the case, then under our existing ordinance, where we require one median unit, and then the rest are low and very low, they would automatically be hitting that 5% very low target. They would automatically be getting a density bonus and an incentive and concession by right. At the task force level, there were concerns that were raised about allowing BMR units to count because of the loss of local control over density incentives and concessions. Concern that buildings would be too high, they would encroach, they would be too dense without the city having a chance to review. There was discussion of a hybrid approach, consideration of granting at least one incentive and concession by right, so that developers would receive something more in line with what the state is trying to get at. If you're going to require affordable housing, you need to give the developer something to help them along. The recommendation on the SDBL was a hybrid approach. The BMR and SDBL units would be mutually exclusive, but there would be a parking standard reduction by right. The parking standard was not defined, only that there would be some reduction when BMR units are included. That, again, still leaves discretion to staff or the city as to what kind of a parking reduction that would be. The task force felt that parking was a development standard that was, had the least potential negative effect, and that most new development would actually be transit-oriented development and would require less parking. So they felt that that was something that we could provide. The third major policy modification involves the income levels that we are trying to target with the ordinance. Again, the ordinance provides one median, and then the rest are low and very low. It does not differentiate between condos and rentals, although the economics are very different. As we saw in an earlier slide, the gaps are much greater on condos. Most other communities don't require very low in ownership developments. As the task force was considering these modifications, there was a legal decision known as the Palmer versus Los Angeles case. It was affirmed by the courts, further complicates the city's and all cities' ability to meet affordable housing goals. Palmer found that inclusionary rentals are a violation of rent control laws. Cities across the state are now figuring out how to best handle this curveball. There may be legislative fix, but it's unlikely to be high on legislators' agenda at the state. In the meantime, we recognize that the city or the redevelopment agency will need to provide funding assistance or other incentives to encourage affordable rental production. There are also other modifications we have made to the ordinance to address this that I will cover later. But the But the, the thrust of this is that rental development, you would need to have an agreement with the rental developer, provide them with either some financial assistance or some concession for them to agree to provide the, the rental BMR units. As a starting point, the task force opted to continue with the 15% minimum inclusionary income level targeting, but we would reallocate the percentage among condo and rental to better reflect the funding gaps and the affordability needs, and that we would look at the RENA targets as a basis to approximate the appropriate percentages for each income As a further basis of support and to evaluate the different, different allocations, we had our economic and housing consultants analyze three prototypical housing developments, a small development, a midsize, and a larger. We analyzed both condo and rental economics separately for each prototype, and then we estimated the financial impact of both the existing ordinance and the proposed modifications with different target income levels, the new definitions, and a reduced parking standard. Using the RENA targets as a guide, which are at the top, what we tried to do was, was spread out that 15% differently, weighted more towards very low on the rental side and more towards moderate on the for sale side, again, due to the economics, that seemed like a, a reasonable way to go. If you make the assumption that all new development is divided equally between rental and for sale, what we would end up with is an even split between income categories, which roughly approximates the RENA goals, but is still kept somewhat simple and straightforward in the 5-10 increments. My apologies here, this table is actually different from the version that was in the packet. We corrected the calculations on the impact of the existing ordinance on the rental projects, so those, those numbers are slightly different. The results are the same, but the magnitudes are a little bit smaller. This table shows that under the existing ordinance, ownership BMRs have a greater impact or cost on developers. Part of that cost may be better absorbed by higher margins, but on a per-unit basis, the gaps are much higher. Under the proposed changes in the ordinance, the impact on condo and large rental projects improves, while the small rental project fares worse. This is because on the rental side, the first BMR is now a very low unit rather than a median unit. Larger projects are expected to take advantage of the lower parking standard to reduce their total development costs and help them cover the cost of the BMRs. Comparing the aftereffect between condos and rentals, condos on tops, rental on the bottom, that middle column being the revised ordinance, you can see that the burden is, is more evenly spread among different housing types and sizes. That's something that we were trying to achieve. So the recommendation on the income level targeting, then, is for the condos to require 10% out of the 15%, 10% would be moderate, 5% would be low. And then on rentals, where we, where we are able to achieve BMRs in the rentals, we would want 5% low and 10% very low. There's no reason to provide moderate in the rentals because the, the defined rent for moderate is actually higher than market rent. So that's, that's why we've split it up this way. We would also commit to providing assistance to the rental projects where the need is the greatest. The next major policy discussion recommendation is the topic of in lieu fees. The existing ordinance has a partial unit fee that applies only to fractional units. It does not allow payment of fees in lieu of providing the required units. However, in lieu fees may provide an alternative means of, could provide an alternative means of compliance. Under the existing ordinance I was describing before, a developer of a seven-unit project would be required to provide a BMR unit. But at six units, they pay a fractional fee, which is substantially less than, than six sevenths of a BMR unit, if you will. This leads to fewer housing units being built. You'll see a lot of five and six-unit projects around San Carlos, you don't see many seven and eights. Having this, this, this fee would also allow us to collect, have a modest collection of fees to, to perhaps do something else with. In the past week, we actually received an application for a seven-unit subdivision, single-family homes. Under the existing ordinance, one of those single-family homes would have to be sold at the median price, roughly, the, the median income level price, which would be about $300,000 or less. In a case like this, the city and the developer might be better off with an alternative such as paying an in lieu fee, or getting, you know, a couple of off-site units in another building. So that's one of the reasons why we'd like to have that, that flexibility. If we aggregated fees that we're collecting, we could leverage them with other housing funds, and then either through acquisition, rehab, or partnering with a developer, we could produce more units or produce perhaps an affordable housing project. L'Oreola Oaks and San Carlos Elms are examples of successful affordable projects that the city has assisted with in the past. Some of the issues and options within in lieu fees, if they're allowed, should the in lieu fee option be allowed by right, or should it be at the city's discretion? If it's discretionary, we would require the developer to prove the project is infeasible by producing the BMR units onsite, and that other alternatives are unsuitable or unavailable. How should we calculate the fee? This is, this is actually a, another big piece of this. Should it be, should it be great enough to produce an affordable unit? Developers should be somewhat indifferent to the payment of the fee versus providing the unit. We don't want them to always pay the fee and then we get no units. We also want it to be something that we can do something with, but it should not be so large to discourage housing development at all. So the recommendation here is to allow the in lieu fees on, on units, but it should be based on a discretionary approval process. And we would direct, we would ask you to direct staff to propose fees reflective of the city or agency's replacement cost. What does it cost us to actually go out and get a unit? That's what we're trying to collect, in lieu of, in lieu of a, a unit actually being The following are a collection of smaller changes that provide more flexibility and clarity on alternatives for compliance, allowing a developer to partner. These are things that are not currently in our ordinance, which we would like to add, allowing a developer to partner with a nonprofit. Developer could provide onsite rental units in a condo development, could do off-site construction, but need to produce 10% more units, could be a combination of new and conversion of existing market rate units. The market rate unit conversions would need to provide security and financing proofs, upgrades to the building would be warranted, existing tenants would have a right of first refusal, and tenant relocation assistance would be necessary. There was also consensus on modifying the provisions regarding BMR standards. The recommendation would be that the finished materials may be different, but still be of good quality. Our current ordinance says that they have to be of like kind, exactly like all of the market rate units. Task force and, and many others in the community, in the housing community think this doesn't really make sense. Does, does someone who's just trying to afford a, a, a unit need marble countertops? Probably not. That money could probably be better, better used elsewhere in the development or to produce more units. On all of the recommendations thus far, there was consensus among the task force, the EDAC, and the Planning Commission. Only one topic led to an alter, to alternative recommendations from EDAC and the Planning Commission, and that is whether single-family residential should be exempt from the ordinance altogether, or continue to pay a modest partial unit fee. Under the existing ordinance, any residential development is subject to a potential payment of the partial unit fee. If you're building one unit, that fee is 1% of the valuation. If it's two to six units, it's, it's that 15% obligation times 2% of the valuation. If you're building seven units or more, you're still obligated to pay a partial fee when there's a decimal fraction over and above the, the, the full unit that you're required to, to produce.
So Mark, can I just do a checkpoint on time here? How much, how much more time do you need on slides?
I would say five to 10 minutes. Following are the existing ordinance exemptions on, on units that don't need to either pay a fee or build a unit. Second dwelling units, obviously exempt, we consider those actually as affordable housing. Residential remodels that don't increase the floor area, this is, again, the, the existing ordinance. Single-family additions that increase floor area by more than 25%. Or reconstruction, if it, if it increases the building by more than 25% or 1,000 square feet. Or developments that have more deed restricted units than are otherwise required. The underlined and italicized sections are for emphasis, and these are the sections that would change under, under both of the alternatives being presented. It's proposed that we replace the existing partial unit fee with a new in lieu fee language applicable to multi-unit development, and have an affordable housing impact fee applicable to single-family and rental development. This actually ties to some of those legal cases, that we need to sort of decouple, delink these, these different fees. We would also revise the calculation of the fee to be an amount that's more indicative of the net cost to produce the unit. On the in lieu fee side, this would apply to ownership developments, it would apply to developments of two to six units, where they have to pay that decimal fraction. The fees would be established by council, not to exceed the difference between the affordable ownership cost and the development cost, and the fee would be applied on a graduated scale. We would also have an affordable housing impact fee. This would apply to rental developments, again, because of that Palmer case, we can't actually require them to provide the units, but we can require them to pay an impact fee. Then they, they can choose to provide the units in lieu of paying the impact fee. This could also apply to the single-unit development, that would either pay the fee or they could construct a, a second unit onsite. Again, that would be considered a, an affordable unit. Under the Planning Commission version, single-family would be exempt altogether. Again, the fees would be established based on the cost of mitigating the market rate units and the need for affordable housing in the city. It would require a nexus study to demonstrate the relationship and what that fee should At a joint study session with the Planning Commission, the EDAC recommended that we change the exemption on single-family to increase it from a 25% for additions, increase the exemption for additions from 25% of the floor area to either 50% or 1,000 square feet. The Planning Commission, at a public hearing subsequent, recommended excluding all types of single-family residential construction, additions, and new homes, except those associated with a land subdivision. The existing partial unit fee actually contributes, contributes about $200,000 a year into the housing in lieu fund, Fund 29. Multifamily developments account for only about 9% of the fees collected. The fees paid by new single-family and additions have ranged from as low as $200,000 to as high as $19,000. Again, they're based on 1% of the valuation of the improvements. We've, we've got $1.3 million aggregated in that fund to date. We also use this fund to, to make payments to nonprofit housing organizations such as Heart and, and Hip, and Samaritan, and Shelter Network. This is the funding source that, that we use for those organizations. In order to understand the impact of these alternatives, yes, we've, we've done an analysis on, on these, on these payments. So should single-family be exempt? Under the existing ordinance, the obligation for affordable housing is actually shared across all housing types in the community. Single-family residential is about 60% of the city, so excluding them excludes 60% of the community from actually paying anything towards the affordable housing obligation. We would lose $196,000 a year approximately in housing funds. To date, developers and homeowners have not complained about this partial unit fee. It, it's clear where it's designated to go to, it goes into the, into the housing fund, it's not used for other city purposes. Neither the task force nor the EDAC saw this as an issue, did not propose exempting it other than the size of the additions. This leaves us with two partial unit fee alternatives. Alternative A, from the Planning Commission, exempts single-family. Alternative B, which is a modification of the EDAC recommendation, it exempts additions that increase a house by more than 1,000 square feet. This alternative language is actually found in sections, if you wanted to know, 18200 and 182050. At this point, I'm available for further questions. And following council discussion, we ask that you provide staff with direction on a final BMR ordinance that we can return for your consideration at a public hearing, perhaps at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, council? Start on my right here, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Suwicky. And I've asked you this before, and I haven't gotten back to you to see if something has changed, but I had an issue with the BMR market because you can only increase the price of the home or the condo unit by how the county grows as a median price. Was anything changed in the ordinance to somehow fix that or alleviate the burden on a home seller? Because if you only own a below-market rate house for, say, five years, you're going to lose money the minute you sell it, because you have to use the agent appointed by the county. So was anything changed, or is it still just the same?
The changes we've made are, are slight, and those changes are actually made in the resale price restriction that we, we have the homeowner agree to, it's not actually in the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering, because I didn't see it, so.
Yeah. In order to, to, to count these units as affordable, they need to remain affordable. So that's why the price is pegged to the income limits, and if the income limits don't change, the price doesn't change. One of the things we did do in the resale price restriction is allow the homeowner to include their sales costs as part of their basis, so in, in effect, they can recover that. So the advantage that they get is the deduction for, for property taxes and, and interest to the extent that they're able to deduct it, and, and the fact that their payment is, is flat over time, other than their HOA dues.
Okay. That was actually my only question. I'm ready to discuss, so.
Mr. Suwicky, I was curious about a little bit of the background on the EDAC recommendation of 1,000 square feet. What was, what was sort of magic about that number?
There's other provisions that use 1,000 square feet, actually. In that exemption section, the next exemption is for reconstruction, and that uses the 1,000-square-foot number. I think there are other, Stephanie, maybe you can fill in on this, I think there's other things in, in, in our, in our code that use 1,000 square feet as a magic number.
So it's a consistency issue?
Yeah. And the concern, again, was 25%. If you're in an 800-square-foot house, adding 25% is not adding a lot of room, but 1,000 square feet is about like another house.
And, and slightly different question, I guess, I was curious, much of, I'm going to make an assumption, that much of the development of our BMR inventory takes place within the RDA. Am I correct, or? No?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, the, the redevelopment agency, when it was first created, didn't, I don't think it had any housing in it. And there's since been some housing, L'Oreola Oaks, and, and I guess some second-story housing units in the downtown, 1,001 Laurel. But no, not, not a lot.
Okay, good.
Questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get a public comment. I have three speakers, Robert Stafford, Bonnie McClure, and Scott Marsters, in that order. Thanks for hanging around, everybody.
You.
Just getting warmed up.
You know, I, good evening, Mayor Royce, and members of the council, Robert Stafford, not here representing a particular parcel of development, just as a citizen. I think Mayor, former Mayor Grisilli has already stipulated that his memory is poor, and he might remember now that he's always given me more time. So there's a little indulgence on that front, to be appreciated.
New, new mayor in town.
Just a second, wait, wait.
Don't time it yet.
I just hit reset. Go ahead, now you got a new start, go.
Well, I mean, the real issue is, is that policy is often a reaction to the past and anticipation of the future. And I think this document, I think what we can say is that staff moved with ready speed for a situation that was a conflagration. So I think that we ought to look to staff and the consultants and say, A-plus job. I think we, we got our money's worth, these guys moved with speed, it was not a hostile environment for them to work in, but it was a difficult one. The other thing is, is I think Councilmember Klein and his work in GPAC helped push this indirectly, indirectly, and I think we ought to thank him for his role in that. What's forgotten here, though, is we're trying to produce housing for people. The minutia, the nuance of this is five-layer chess. So when you look at this, how is this going to produce units for people? It's not going to be from development. So when you look at this, in the short run, it won't, when you look at this, you really want to think about how can we bridge some of the gaps for where we have problems with retention with teachers and police? How do we encourage development? One of the issues that I think is excellent that, that staff has done is they've created off-site provisions. No one has ever moved a BMR off-site because there's no disparate economic zones here. We don't have, this is high income and this is low. In San Carlos, everything's middle. So part of the issue is going to be, can we leverage these in lieu fees to buy affordability down in apartment buildings? down in apartment buildings? What can we do today? The other thing that I'm hearing from Councilmember Grocott, and I think his background also as a design professional will be helpful, is if we get in lieu fees, let's put some time on it. We've got to spend them and put them to work. We need to set our sites a little smaller to figure out, how can we incrementally get units now? We wait for the large projects, it's going to take a long time. I also think the design considerations that go into this is going to be critical, and I think Councilmember Grocott has some good ideas in that regard. The other thing that you really want to think about is in lieu fees need to be shared by everyone, not just developers. I think it's appropriate to bring it down to 500 square feet personally and let, as a community, let the folks share in the responsibility of providing some housing. The other thing that you want to look at is there are some ordinances that you just have to question why they're in here. In particular, look at 18.204.030, D12, where it's an aesthetic. So if it interferes with the adjacent property, well, all high density is going to cause issues for there. So when you go through this minutia, this is one in particular, it's very glaring and a plaintiff's attorney's dream. But the bottom line is, this is a good ordinance, but you really have to go through it and figure out, how are we going to provide housing now and not get lost in the minutia? But otherwise, I think we're on our way.
Good. Mr. Stafford, thank you very much.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. To save time, I'll just ditto what Bob said, because he took a little extra time. And I, as a homeowner and somebody that's going through the remodel process right now for about the age of time, I think that we all should share, and it should be a fee on the residential, and I think 500 square feet is fair.
Thank you. And Scott Marsters?
Thank you. So under the current BMR ordinance, anyone who remodels and increases the square footage of their home by more than 25% would pay an in lieu fee. This seemed to be unfair to me, that a homeowner who lived in an 850-square-foot home would be charged a fee if they increased the size of their home by as little as 210 square feet, while somebody who wanted to remodel their 3,000-square-foot home would not be charged in lieu fee until they hit 750 square feet. I brought this up at the joint EDAC and Planning Commission meeting. EDAC chose to make it more fair by recommending the fee be triggered at 50% or 1,000-square-foot increase. I voted no because I did not have the information as to how much of an impact the change would have on the RDA. We were looking at somewhere, the numbers that were thrown out at the time were $10,000 or $20,000, and that didn't seem to be a big enough impact at that time. The Planning Commission later voted to remove the in lieu fee for single-family homes. Since then, I've found out that this brings, this in lieu fee brings about $200,000 into the RDA housing fund each year. Knowing that information, I'd like to say that I agree with EDAC's recommendation, and I encourage you to accept alternate B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on this? Tom? Tom Davids?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a great opportunity to talk on this subject because I've been involved in it since the early '90s, when we first started a housing committee and developed the first BMR. I think what's been done here through the task force and through the consultants is a tremendous step forward in making this more workable. It deals with alternative sites. It deals with alternative standards. It deals with the flexibility that we really never had before, and it really gives us, I think, the opportunity to move forward and to make a substantial contribution to affordable housing. One of the criticisms at the Planning Commission was that, well, you've got a million trees sitting in the pot, you don't seem to know what to do with it. And I think that's a bit of an unfair judgment. I think the fact that it's there means that we have the opportunity to use it. The challenge, I believe, is for staff to step up and decide how we're going to make use of that money, whether it's joining with the development, whether it's buying property, whether it's building on their own, or whatever. The fact that it's there gives us the flexibility to really step up and use it. The other issue with the Planning Commission was the basically elimination of $200,000 a year on single-family residences. And I think there is a strong argument to be made for the entire community participating in this process, as they have since the early '90s. So keeping this fee on single-family residences, to me, makes a whole lot of sense. It is a continuing fund, a source of funding, which allows us to continue to feed the pot and to provide money for building houses downstream. Without that money, we'll quickly dry up, and we really have no program at all. And then we have to question what we've done in terms of providing affordable housing to teachers, to public safety, to store clerks, which is exactly where we started 15, almost 20 years ago. So when all is said and done, I compliment my colleagues on the committee and the staff and the consultants for working on this. I think we have a terrific opportunity, and I think that the, I think it's item B, which, yeah, alternative B, which is one of the recommendations open to you, is the one that you should seriously consider and hopefully pass. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. So study session, again, how best do you want input? You want us? Comments? Passed on? Mr. Grocott, maybe? Start off?
Sure, I'll start off. Number one, your slide there where you have all these different professions, you can add council members because we all don't make a great deal of money. I struggle with my own business.
But the hours are great.
Yeah, the hours are great. The hours I spend staying up till 1:00 in the morning are fantastic. I, myself, I'm not much of a fan of this whole thing, BMR. It's really just, it's creating a lottery, essentially, because there's no way you can provide to all the needs. And I'm not so certain that you should even try. And I'm not so certain that, you know, there's a, there was a study that came out of a university, and I'm loathe to remember right now which one it was, that looked at this whole issue, and their conclusion was, you actually hurt the production of housing with these BMR rates and so forth. And you also hurt the people that get into it, because once they get into it, as Mr. Klein pointed out, when you go to sell, you're right back where you started in most cases because you don't get to share in the benefit of prices going up and so forth. So I'm not sure it really helps an individual to get into, when they buy at least, to get into a situation. Maybe the rental market might be a little different. But the whole thing is lottery, like I said, like I started to say before, where, you know, some individuals get to benefit and other individuals who don't win the lottery don't benefit. So therefore, I think, if you can't do things equitably for everyone, you shouldn't do them at all, is my philosophy on it. Now, if you want to do that as an individual, help people out, that's a moral issue. You're free to do that, but for a government to do it, I don't agree with. That said, I like the direction that all these recommendations are going. You know, just to point one out is the issue about, you know, to what level do you finish out an apartment, you know, or a condo? Do you do something that, you know, is going to have marble countertops? Or do you do something that's nice enough, but is not, you know, marble countertops? So there's a lot of things in here that I agree with. When it gets down to this last item of single-family, I agree with the Planning Commission, just eliminate it in its entirety. And Mr. Swickie, with all due respect, said, you know, they haven't heard anything from homeowners and so forth. I hear from it, that my clients can't believe some of these fees they have to pay. Now, they don't go to the city because, you know, why fight City Hall? And quite frankly, sometimes people feel like, if I say something about something like that, what does it do? You know, people all the time are worried about what might hurt my project in its review process, and they don't want to just, you know, they don't want to rock the boat at all. They just want to get their project done and completed and approved at City Hall and so forth. So that's why people don't rock the boat and make any comments about things like that. But, you know, a lot of remodels and additions and so forth, things that, projects that actually these days are few and far between. But, you know, I get a lot of comments about, for instance, the project I did on Cortoleros, what a beautiful house. Well, that remodel cost that homeowner somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000. So that 1% fee is $5,000. That's no small chunk of change for a homeowner. Now, it's a two-income family. Obviously, they do all right to be able to do what they're doing there, but $5,000 can do a lot of things in a remodel. It's a significant amount of money. So I agree with the Planning Commission, just eliminate the whole thing that touches on single-family residences.
I think the, again, I'd like to commend everybody that had a hand in working on this. It's a very comprehensive document. I think it tries to balance off what the ordinance is and what we want it to be. Mr. Stafford indicated, sort of the way I sit on our feel on a lot of these things, the whole point is, we're trying to get people into housing, and we're trying to keep them into housing. The monies that are collected by the in lieu fees that are upwards of, close to $200,000 are sent out into the community to a number of nonprofits, which I am very familiar. And these nonprofits don't just put it in the bank and let it sit there or pay administrative staff. They go out and they put that money into people's pockets so that they can live in an apartment or rent an apartment, or perhaps with some housing needs, other alternative housing needs. And I think that's the whole point of having these laws and these below-market rate housing. I built houses for 27 years, and we had BMR, probably the last half of that at least, if not even before that, we had BMR ordinances in every city that we dealt with. And we made it work. I mean, if you, certainly if you asked our druthers from a strict business standpoint, we would have said, gee, we'd much rather build a $700,000 house than a $300,000 house. But we knew what the requirement was when we went in there, and there was no ordinance that stopped us from building units and, again, providing housing for citizens and for people. It would be great if we didn't need any more housing, if all people stopped coming to California, if we just stopped and there are no more people in the world, but that's not going to happen. And I believe in this program. I think, again, the ordinance is well-crafted, and we're trying to improve it as we go along. And I would, I think the Planning Commission, I read their minutes, and I respect their decision of how they felt it should go, but I am going to be voting for, or should we say recommending, alternative B to be included into the ordinance when it comes back to us on the 25th.
Okay, I don't want to take up too much time because Councilmember Grisilli pretty much said what I was going to say.
Keep that up all the whole time?
Exactly. No, I, first of all, yeah, I would also like to commend everyone who worked on this. This is a great document. And then I'm going to go with option B as well when it comes back to us. I read the minutes as well, and the Planning Commission. I'm not going to be as nice as Councilmember Grisilli, but to say that having single-family residences paid for is putting the burden on the minority, San Carlos is a single-family resident town that makes up the majority of the homes. So to exclude the majority from paying on something that does truly benefit us all, while not everyone gets to take advantage of the BMR program, we take advantage of it by having teachers who can live in our town, by having policemen and firefighters who can live in our town, who are invested in our town. So I do think it benefits us all, and I think it is a moral, it is a moral good. I think we need to keep it going, and I like how there is now flexibility, and that's good. And I think when this comes around again, it'll be even a little more flexible, and we'll be able to see how this works in the next go-around. We'll make it better, and we'll keep making it better, but I don't ever want to see something like this go away, so I'll back it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief also, that I'll be supporting alternate B. I agree, everybody does benefit from this program. One thing I was going to bring up, I was looking at some statistics that the County of San Mateo put together. There was a question, I believe Mr. Klein was actually in the class where I asked it, which was, which occupation is expected to have the greatest growth in the number of jobs through 2016? And it's a job sector that affects San Carlos significantly. It's food prep and serving. That's where the jobs are going. So it's interesting to note that, you know, we're proud of Laurel Street. We love our nightlife, and the fact that people come here to dine and have a great time. Simultaneously, there's a subtext, which is, if you work in San Carlos at the jobs that are the most numerous here, you're not really welcome to live here. We're not going to have anything available to you. Simultaneously, we all are concerned about traffic. We're concerned about parking. We're concerned about pollution. It makes sense that those people who work here should have an opportunity to live here. Not a right, not a guarantee, but an opportunity, and a fair one. So to that extent, I'll conclude my remarks and say that I agree with EDAC's recommendation and will support alternative B.
Yeah, I too. I'm pretty close to housing and BMRs by being on the board for Heart, which is our housing indolment. They've raised about $10 million over the last five years, built 500 units, and these are 100% low-income BMR units. This is San Bruno, the Crossing by Tanfran Shopping Center. There's a new 160-unit facility by Daly City Bart. There's one in South City, et cetera, et cetera. And housing is a critical issue in the Bay Area. And in those units, you see all the types of people that are just so grateful where they're able to work and live in the area, Bay Area, they'd never been, would be able to afford. So we need to do our share. Everybody needs to pitch in. Great job, not only from the staff, the entire team that put all this stuff together. I do think there is some funding that needs to go on by everybody, and that's kind of leans myself towards alternative B. And with that are my thoughts. I think that's the last item. My, first time I've done this, adjourned my second time, I guess. Adjourned. Thank you.